This conference will now be recorded.
Excuse me, Mr. Gepper? Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Mr. Kinkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, question carries five though to allow the remote attendance.
All right, great, and just as a couple of housekeeping items, for those of you that are dialing in, just make sure you keep your computers on mute throughout the meeting to minimize any background noises. And if you're a supervisor, again, I would encourage you to put your phone on mute and then just unmute it when it's your time to talk. If you're on location in the boardroom, if you've got a cellphone, just make sure that your ringers are off. With that, Chris, do we have any speakers for today?
Yes, we do, Mr. Jim Wazinski, Lake Pines Court, Silver Lakes. Wazinski, excuse me, I apologize for that.
Jim Wazinski, Lake Pines Court, Silver Lakes. And here just briefly today, just to express the frustration our community with the lack of implementation of the pond standards, especially with regard to the toral removal. Our community, after the standards were adopted in July, waited until things kind of could get sorted out, put in requests for the toral removal, only 12 requests came in, or 11 requests. Nine of them on Lake 89, two of them on Lake 85. We tried to bundle them together as a community, that got rejected by staff here. I then sent in the word of all the emails that people sent to me requesting that got rejected. We put in then, I did a template and everybody individually went in and put their request in about a week. So right around Labor Day, a little maybe week after Labor Day, all the requests were in exactly the way staff wanted. After being rejected twice. Standards do have a 30-day deadline on reviewing requests, getting written responses back, and then getting the process moved. We were told that based on some money left in last year's budget, after a big project in Hampton Park was going to be a smaller pocket than the vault course, and then Silver Lakes would be handled probably sometime in November. I have all the emails from all this. And that's what our community expected. That never happened. And we don't know why. I've never received an explanation as to why that didn't happen. It might have been because the budget ran out, I don't know. But we never found out. Now we are coming to January, so it's four months in. Some of the snowbirds are back and they're calling me saying, you know, what the heck? This was supposed to have been done all, you know, way long ago. And so I've been going back and forth with Chris and he's been very good. He's been extraordinarily responsive, like four times today even. And trying to get some semblance of what's going to happen here. Because now they're saying, hey, you know what? If they don't start doing something until February, you know, March, we're going home. So we have another season here, we're looking at this crap. And that's just unacceptable. It's simply unacceptable. The standards are not being implemented as they are intended to be implemented. Now, what I understand is happening now in January is nothing's happened until today, after I started moaning again. There was a permit application put in. Well, as I've said many times here and in writing, there's no permit requirement that anyone can point to. I have asked Lee County three times now, Jessica Salzer, Carol Sissler, whoever. You'd point to me somewhere, anywhere in the development code, ordinance, a statute, any kind of authority whatsoever that says a requirement, there's a permit requirement. They can't do it. It's not there. I asked here, okay, give me something. So what do I get sent? Land clearing ordinances, you know, cutting down trees from land to build a house. Well, that's not it either. So this permit process is going forward. Okay, if you want to waste your money on, you know, permits, it's only 30 bucks, but, you know, go for it. Now I'm told the permit's going to take, you know, four weeks to get issued. Well, permits get turned around very quickly in Lee County. I made up my roof permit in a day, air conditioner in a day or two days. So delay, delay, delay. Then there's another water sample that was going to be done next week. Why next week? I don't know. Doesn't have to be done under the standards. The standards have water monitoring requirements in them. And as long as there's not a problem with a pond under those water quality standards, there's nothing more to be done. This is just another waste of time and a waste of money. And if these are going in, you know, to Ernesto from GSCDD, that's expensive. That's costing money every time this thing gets done. It's just not necessary. And so now we're at this point of, well, maybe we'll get to it and maybe we can issue the order in February. Well, people had stuff in, had everything requested in at Labor Day. And now we're talking February. And I don't know if that's going to happen. I mean, I've been just constantly harping about this. Chris has been patient with me in taking all of this. But come on, this stuff needs to get implemented. You guys adopted these standards back in July and the implementation has been zero. It's been zip. And it's just getting extraordinarily frustrating. My residents are all over me about this. And we just need to get this done. And that's just, you know, I know there's going to be some discussion today, you know, from Brian about what the projects are and what's coming forward. These things have to be done. We put that 30-day limit in there. We had it, it was originally 10 days in the standards, 10 days. And then El said, we can't do it in 10 days. He said, okay, Al, what do you need? 30 days. Here's 30 days. And now we're at five months and we still don't have anything done. So I would just ask you to perhaps ask some questions, maybe put some pressure on staff or something to get these things done. Because these are standards that you adopted and they're just sitting there. And I don't want to see it happen like the last time. We did this five years ago. I was on both of those committees. And the last time, it just died. Nothing ever happened. Here, I think we did a very good job on the standards. Flavi and I drafted these standards together and I just don't want to see it die. And we're only talking about in Silver Lakes. We're talking about 11 people. There's 174 waterfront homes in Silver Lakes. 11 out of 174. This is not a huge project. It is a small project, it's a tiny project. And yet we can't get it done. So that's all. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Chris, what's the scope for that?
It's really minor removal, as Jim stated. We have the quote from Aquagenics and they're doing the little permitting and some baseline water quality sampling. But from a practical standpoint, we're just waiting till February when the water levels start dropping because you get a better spray and a better cut and a more efficient job with it.
Is it a complete perimeter spray? Or is it depth in going into the lake from control to wherever? That's...
Yeah, it'll be total removal, root up. You know, we're going to try to get them. So, and it does make it a little easier to harvest them and cut them on the water level.
Only 11 properties, so this is not going around the whole, like this is 11 properties. Nine of them on Lake 89, two on 85, and there's none on 88, none on 89.
And what's the cost?
I would have to look. I know we got the quote from Aquagenics. It's not particularly expensive. Brian just walked in, he may know what the top is. Brian, you know what that quote from Aquagenics was?
14,000. Change.
14,000?
That'll be half your budget for the year.
They do it for free in Pelican.
Not in total removals.
Then go all the way to total removal, just spray them to kill them.
We don't want to.
But you want to spend 14,000 when you don't have to?
No, I do not. I don't want to do removals, period. I don't mind sending them out. Total removals is going to be a big time issue.
And don't do it that way, Brian. Do it the way Aquagenics knows how to do it. It's effective and it works in Pelican. They spray them, 30 days later it's dead. And they keep them down and they don't come back. There's not rocket science.
When you say keep them down, Bob, you keep them down.
Well, if they ever start popping up again, you just spray them again. Because we do this in our fishing grounds.
So when you're, you know, we've got three-foot rods on our shorelines. To keep them down, you've got basically have them removed all the way out, three, four people at control level.
From the high watermark out, there's no growth, period. And if something starts to grow.
So at the lowest level, they're not seen.
That's correct. You spray them, they die, and 30 days later they're gone forever and you never look at them again.
Are you using a harbinger to do this?
You haven't put a machine in there to physically remove those because it's the whole pond we're talking about.
No, we're talking about 11, we're talking about nine houses.
Yeah, this is, this is a big deal, guys.
There's been nine houses.
If you have total of 12 or 13 on that pond, there's no growth. We did all, not just that one pond, it was the rest of Silver Lakes.
Yeah, there's a total of 11 in Silver Lakes. Two on Pond 85, nine on Pond 89, none on 99, none on 88. It's a total of nine houses. We're not taking the whole pond out.
Is the bid we have on the nine or is the bid on something else?
Should be the individual lots.
Should be on nine lots. And half of those lots aren't even completely covered. They're only like halfway covered.
That seems like a lot.
Does the bidder understand the limits of the scope of work? We will go over again, but first thing we had to do is apply for the permits from the county. We did that. Permit's been applied, before I can wait for them to give me a blessing day or night. Water sampling is going on Monday through Ernesto because that has to be criteria before I can do a removal. So you still have 30 days before this happens. Technically, if we want to do it, whatever water goes down enough, because right now you're still a control point.
So why, hey Brian, what is the solution? I heard a machine going in?
Yeah, you have to put a machine in there to go in behind the houses. And technically, we probably got to get surveyed because there you got two houses that want it, two houses that don't want it. It's like going low in your yard.
Back up, back up the truck.
You can see.
Back up the truck. We're trying to build a Eiffel Tower when all you need to do is spray it and stop it for nothing.
We can do that.
That's not, that's not supposed to be done. All they're asking for in that world were, we've been doing it for a while.
I think, so Bob, to your point, I think the first step in the process should be the path of least resistance, which is go out and spray. And I think that the residents would be amenable to whatever solution that we determine. And we, you know, so we'd have a phase one, which is let's spray, let's see if that solves the problem before we do spend 14,000.
We'll solve the problem, though.
It will solve the problem.
Basically experienced, that solves the problem.
It was done before in Silver Lakes four or five years ago and it does the problem.
No, it's been known for 11 years.
It fixes the problem. That's exactly what our residents are expecting. They're expecting it to be sprayed. They know it's going to be getting brown and it'll be 30 days and it's going to fall over.
Why, hey, Chris, why are we not just going in and spraying? And no permits needed? And that should be business as usual, like maintenance, period.
You don't get permits to spray in Pelican.
Absolutely, right.
There's no need to permit.
That's what I'm saying, there's no permit needed.
She's just playing games. There's, what I'm trying to get to is that Aquagenics, were they, did they give us the option of spraying? Why wouldn't they have said that to us?
We didn't ask, we just told them.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. We're doing what the work is, why didn't they say, well, instead of cutting it, I can just spray it like I do it at Pelican?
And to be quite honest, that should be part of the contract moving forward, is that's part of maintenance? Anytime they go out and they spray. Which, Bob, that's what they do in Pelican, correct?
We've been doing it for years.
And it costs nothing, guy, when it was done in Silver Lakes.
Exactly right.
It's a terrible amount of money.
Let's move forward because we're still in comments. So Chris, can we look at altering the solution to spray? See if we can get that done before we spend $14,000 to do some more evasive solutioning?
We'll address it and get a revised scope from Aquagenics because it's the same contractor, Pelican.
And if there's a nickel more, I'd like to hear it.
Bob, question on this stuff because there's, along with what Brian's saying. There are latorals and then there are latorals. At the Dutch Club, we cut because we had a massive amount of latorals, 25, 30, 40 feet out into the lake. To what extent was the spraying effective on, let's say, bandwidth of latorals to where you could manage?
We maintained the eight to 12 foot.
Eight to 12.
Always have had that. And what we are addressing is where the resident says, I'm a fisherman, I want to fish from behind my home. We take it out so it's limestone stacked.
You know, what I would love to see is, we've got an asset on the board, Bob. Bob has been engaged in Pelican for years around lake banks. And I think they're best in class over there. Why aren't we not tapping into Bob to determine what's worked in Pelican and adopt those best practices? That's, I mean, Bob, you wouldn't have any problem sitting down with staff and walking through what's worked in Pelican to this point, would you?
Absolutely not.
Let's do that.
So I, again, just following up, I mean, as I've been saying, this does not require permits. It should be sprayed, there'd be a couple thousand dollars to all 11 houses.
And yes, a couple thousand dollars this time around. And then as we work this moving forward, it should be part of our standard maintenance so we don't have to worry about this moving forward.
If you keep coming by and when it pops up, spray it again, you're good, you're done. There's nothing else.
All right, so we'll modify scope and see if we can come up with a better solution. In the interim, Chris, if you can, I would really like Bob to get engaged with Brian on some of the solutioning here, if there's some best practices that are proven in Pelican. And I'm sure the rest of the board members and Ed, you're very vocal around pond standards and if you don't have any problem with Bob jumping in and providing some sponsorship here, that's what I would recommend.
You might want to, if a permit just went in today, you may want to pull back to save your money.
It's not wrong. It has to be approved before you pay for it, so it's not wrong.
Okay, so let's continue moving forward. Chris, any other speakers?
No, and hold on, let me just check. Yes, we do have Mark Allison. He wants to comment on the soccer contracts. And I'll ask the board if they want to take him up front or if they want to wait till that agenda item comes up.
He's here, ready.
He's online.
I'm okay.
Mark, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good, Mark had a statement he brought over and we put a copy at each member's desk. So Mark, if you'd like to give your point to the counterpoint?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon to all of you. I just wanted to take a second of your time to address some of the new points that have been brought up in the field agreements that you will all have by now that we're in the process of working through. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the league director of Gateway Soccer, have been for the past nine years. It's my opinion that all the youth programs that we have here on Gateway acts as a vital part of the community and the amenities that we offer to the residents. So I also understand that the district must manage those costs of the maintenance of those amenities. And in the past, GSA, Gateway Soccer, has always worked with those decisions in an effort to continue to offer a venue for the community's youth. Having said that, a new proposed agreement had incorporated new items that will impact the leagues financially without any reasoning as to why the changes were being suggested. Specifically, and I'll address the ones that are concerned, and obviously you guys can sort of go back over those. Storage fees, a new proposed fee for the use of the concession stand, storage area has been suggested. These areas are designated to store items that we offer to us, that were offered to us when our storage facility was removed by the district. They are vital to our day-to-day running of the programs and we really have no practical way to run our leagues without them. If there is an issue with the usage or the cleanliness, I would suggest we had an open discussion between us and the operations team, explaining what is requested. And obviously, the leagues, realizing the importance of these storage areas, would do everything in their power to rectify that because they are so important. Second point would be the equipment that we're being told will no longer be replaced. The agreement states the field and goals and nets will no longer be replaced by the district. However, the responsibility of determining when the equipment must be replaced and the usage of the equipment will still be at the discretion of the district. We have a total of 20 soccer goals, of which eight are still in the original, eight are still the originals that were gifted to the district by the CSA in 2011. So only six sets of goals have been replaced in the past nine years. Currently, there are three programs that utilize the field equipment. That's myself, the eight-week charter school, and John Robinson's competitive program. Plus, you also have the residents use the field as well. I'm not sure how the cost of replacement equipment can be fairly divided between all those entities. My suggestion instead is a better line of communication between the operations team and the league to work on preventative maintenance instead of replacement. Because we find that there is no work done on these from year to year. And of course, they do deteriorate. So if we could just work better to maintain them, they would last a lot longer than what they're doing now. Next point would be the line striping paint. The agreement states the cost of the paint is to be absorbed by the leagues. My question is, Lee County has always provided paint to Gateway Service District. That's part of an agreement that goes back way before I even took over. And I'm wondering if that's changed and if the county are no longer providing that? And if they are providing it, why now all of a sudden we have to absorb the cost of that? So that's more of a question as to what's different from what we used to have before. And lastly, we have a late payment penalty. The agreement now states there'll be a 1.5% late fee will be administered if payments are not received within 14 days of commencement for the leagues. The prior agreement for 2020, we had, and Chris can remember this, we had discussed about extending the period to make that first initial payment from 30 days to 45, simply because all the leagues recognize that the beginning of every season is the most work we have to do to get everything up and running. Not to mention, we also have to collect all outstanding payments. So we've managed to get it agreed to go to 45 days. And in this agreement, we've suddenly had it reduced to 14 and implement the late fee. And one of the things I wanted to point out, in the nine years I've run the league, we've never not made any payments. We've always paid and we've always made sure that our debt is clear at end of each season. So why we have a late payment implement is a mystery to me. In summary, GSA would appreciate any consideration the board can give us regarding the proposed amendments as we all have a common goal in providing an environment that benefits the youth in our communities in the most cost-effective way. And that's all I had to say, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hey, Mark, how many times have you met with the district to talk about these changes? Our district contact?
The first time I saw it was when it was emailed to me in the format that you have. I didn't have any discussion prior.
Okay, so no one from the district has sat down with you to talk about these potential changes and why they're being proposed and/or how, if there is any problems, how to solve those prior to you just receiving an email saying, these are the changes? Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
All right. Any questions for Mark?
I do. So Mark, in regards to the late payment penalty, can you collect the money earlier from the parents to ensure that you can comply with the 14-day deadline? So instead of us not, I mean, not shortening that deadline from 45 to 14, you just collect the money from them ahead of time, giving yourself enough time to pay us? Would that be a possibility?
It's not so much the payment of the monies because we're paying 90% of the fees that are anticipated for the entire season within that allotted timeframe. It's a simple fact that at the beginning of every season, we have the most amount of work with setting up all of the aspects of, and this includes flag too, because they were privy to the meeting last time. It's all the work we're trying to do. And 14 days just doesn't allow us enough time to set up everything else and also arrange that payment to go out in time to be able to make that deadline. It's just too short a period with everything else we've got going on in the beginning of our season. We have a 10-week season. So we have eight, effectively, there are eight other weeks of that season that we're going to be at the field continuing with our league. The payment is still irrelevant in that respect as to when it gets supplied. We're not going anywhere. We're going to be able to send it to you. It's just you're giving us a short period of time and then giving us a late fee after that that, quite frankly, we've never needed to have. A simple email to say, hey, don't forget to send the payment would just suffice just as much because we're focusing on trying to run our leagues.
Thanks, Mark. Flavi, any additional questions?
Yes, in regards to the equipment, for maintenance, that's what you're proposing, right? What would you propose or suggest that we create as a maintenance program for those soccer nets?
Well, a lot of times, it's wear and tear on simply the goals and the net sitting out there. And what we've done in the past is worked closely. And if I see, and again, I want to stress, I'm not rushing to find a way to replace nets or goals because I want the district to have the extra cost. Quite frankly, I'm doing everything I can to maintain them so that I don't have to pick up the phone or call or send an email to the operations team saying, I think we've got a problem. So we're looking after them on a season-by-season basis. But there always comes a point where some of these, through just age, are going to deteriorate. What my point is, for example, we had a situation last season where I did not know that a goal had been destroyed by the operations team until I went to the field two weeks before the season was about to start. And of course, then I asked the question, where it's gone? It was told it had been destroyed. And I always think to myself, is that the first course of action? Sometimes they could be welded together. Sometimes we could do preventative maintenance by painting them. This could help prolong the life of these goals and nets and help us not have to incur any costs or minimizing the amount of costs that we're dealing with.
So, I mean, just kind of like more in detail, I guess, more in specific, I guess, will be the netting, the painting, and maybe welding it together. I only really see those three items as what kind of maintenance you could do on those nets. But what you explained verbally, it's more about just wear and tear, not necessarily anything that could be done in a maintenance-wise that would prevent further deterioration if we didn't do anything?
The wear and tear or the maintenance as you're reaching, I mean, the goals stay out on the fields year-round. I don't know what more can be done other than trying to maintain the weather conditioning, if you like, of them. They are designed, most of them are aluminium, so they are designed to be out there as long as they can. I just say that sometimes it could be useful for us to meet with the operations team and see areas of concern and address them before we get to a situation where a goal gets thrown away. When you throw one, you have to replace two because they're sold in pairs. So now you have a situation of an additional cost for an extra goal that, quite frankly, you don't need, where we could have fixed the one that was damaged.
That's all I have.
I have a question for staff, maybe the board, it's just my own ignorance. Why were these four changes adopted? Where did this come from, the proposed changes?
Those changes were brought up from staff and we will bring them up at the agenda and address each one of them during that discussion.
Previous to today, right now, it hadn't been brought?
No. There's been a few that have been brought up, the similar type things before.
I didn't know. Okay, I'm all right with that. So we want to discuss it later or?
Well, there's an agenda for it.
Okay, we're just having Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right. And for the record, I just want to read a text that came through from Tim Miller. Tim is one of the directors of the Flag Football League. He sent me a text just a few minutes ago. It said, Doug, I don't think I'll be able to make the meeting today. Just wanted to let you know that we are not happy with the proposed raise in the prices for renting the fields at Gateway. It would force us to increase registration fees and could also affect our league opening in the spring. So I can submit this to, Chris, I'll shoot it over to you for the record, just so you can have it. Moving on to the next slide, that's the last of our public speakers, correct?
Guys, before we get started on that with that comment, I'm looking at the new cost breakdown that we got emailed to us and comparing it with the one that was in the original book. And you say the gentleman indicated that he was objecting to the new charge. I'm trying to look through this. I don't see where did we raise anything? What did we raise that he would have an objection to of costs? I don't see anything. Am I missing it?
Yeah, they're looking at charging for the storage and for the pavilions and then also uh.
Well, I, I thought he was referring to the schedule, like the cost of those ones that we just, uh, Mark responded to. I don't see those one here, what's the component of cost? What, what, what is that?
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I can clarify, I can clarify that um in the addendum, the, the fees refer to Article Two, which is at the back of that. Um, which has a breakdown dependent on the particular program, youth program that is being, uh, the fields are being rented to. That fee has increased. Uh, we have three fees. Uh, we have a, a cost per field per hour, that's gone up by $5 per hour per field. Lights have gone up on a cost per hour, which has gone up $5 more. And also a non-Gateway resident fee, which is also increased $5. So basically a $5 across the board increase on the three fees that we get charged for the use of the fields.
Would you go through this again, quickly, cost of the field?
Yeah, 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 they're slow through those parts. I want to make sure because.
Yep, we have.
It would be more than that, go ahead.
So there are currently, there are five designated fields as part of the Sherman Soccer Complex. So we get charged per field per hour. That fee went from, I believe, $25 an hour to $30 an hour. We also get charged per hour for the usage of the lights. So obviously, uh, that impacts Flag a little bit more than me because they use the fields only at night. Um, that has been raised by $5 an hour um for each field. And also we charge obviously a, a family fee to non-Gateway residents. Uh, anybody that signs up that is not part of the Gateway community. Uh, they get charged, uh, what's $25 per family per year? And that's gone up to $30 per family per year.
What's the cost for an in-Gateway family?
There is no additional cost. That would be up to the individual leagues and the fees that they have to incur and charge those individual families.
Well, I understand it didn't go up, but what is?
Zero.
You want to know?
So we're just having a non-resident charge?
It went out of $5.
Five bucks?
And the lights only went up $1.
The lights went up $2. If you're Gateway resident, you use the field at no cost. If you have 80% or more, it's no cost to you to use that field. If you wish to use the lights, it's $5 an hour. That has not gone up for a resident at all.
Well, did the lights go from 25 to 30 or 25 to 27?
It went from 23 to 25.
23 to 20.
What, what, what's the uh?
And then five fields?
Five fields went up $5 from 25 to 30. What were recommended, nothing's in concrete?
Per, per field.
Budget for the soccer fields? Everything? You're looking at 250 to 300,000?
We, we usually spend a little over $300,000 a year on the fields and we bring in about 60,000.
300,000 divided by 6600.
Uh, that's, but that's not accurate because that 300,000 isn't just for the soccer field.
Well, that's what I was trying to get to, Doug. What, what's your, I, I don't want the exact number. What's the ballpark cost of the soccer field budget? 200?
Five.
What's that? As you see where I'm going here in a minute, 200,000?
Yes, we'll say 2, 250.
250.
Nah.
Divided by 6600. 3787. So if there's anything that I'll probably make a motion later on is the non-resident goes to the same price as everybody in the community pays. That's the bull that they get a discount. As far as I'm concerned, it's going $40, not 30.
We didn't do that.
I said, I'm doing it, that's my calculation, that's going to be my motions. This deal of subsidizing people, I'm getting tired of it. I've got people that are on my neck about this. In fact, I'm even going to go so far as to suggest we table this for a month and go to Lee County and see if they want to take over these fields.
Okay.
It's, the price of this is just out of hand.
Uh, since we have this item on the table, should, does, do we want to go and pull it up? And address this item now, since we're already having in-depth conversation?
I'm kind of done.
Okay, yeah, it's fresh, let's do it.
Alright. So let's, let's pull this uh agenda item.
Pull the agenda item, I would like to go and make the motion to defer it for a month to give us time to go to Lee County. And see if there's any interest from them to take over the soccer fields. There was a discussion on this a couple of years ago and I know several people in the community uh have Lee County people uh at least talking about it. I'd like to see if uh it has wings.
Is there a second?
No, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second for the discussion.
Yeah, uh, I'll first, I think that's, that's a terrible idea. The last thing we want is the county controlling anything else in this community. It's, I think there's other, I think there's other solutions that we can look into, but having the county come in, I think is a terrible, terrible solution.
If we can reduce the cost.
Charge a CDB and not have.
Wow. Okay, let's, any other, any other uh discussion on this?
I have a question first, Chris, one, the soccer field were gifted to us, did we have any um? Anything that said that we couldn't give it off to the county and let them take over?
I don't think there'd be a problem. I'd have to defer that and look at the history of it. The uh soccer field was created with Gateway funds, the adjacent park. There were public funds used to that, that is a de facto public park. Across the street, it's only the soccer fields that we have control over.
So it's kind of halfway there now?
And I don't think there would be an issue with it. I know there's a requirement through the development regional impact for a certain amount of recreational acreage in the community. But whether it's the county's ownership or that, it's recreational acres in the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know enough about it right now, but I would be siding more with Doug. In that I don't like the idea of the county having control, but I like what it said, it would transfer the cost. Those fields cost us $200,000 a year.
Well, we have, yes, in addition to that, your problem is, is all five fields really need to be rebuilt. Your irrigation, your drainage, your uh everything, they're 25 years old, to the point they're worn out. It's kind of like a golf course, you need to redo it. We hit a price done, you're looking at $400,000 to $500,000 per field, so that's roughly another $2 million to do all that. Um, it, it's getting to the point.
Well, if, if it got to the point that the county would do it and they agreed to spend the money, that's one set of services.
They won't do that.
Well, you know, that would be continued upon for my group if they said that.
Well, and I think, I think, I think staff is getting a little ahead of themselves when they're saying $500,000 to completely refurbish those, those fields. Um, I, I, I don't think that's something that we would even agree to do at this point. Um, there's definitely more cost-effective solutions. So there's a, there's a motion, a second, uh, any additional discussion on, on the motion that's on the floor?
And the motion against to defer.
We're supposed to 30 days until we have a chance for staff and manager to meet with Lee County and explore the possibility if there's any interest in the county taking over the soccer fields.
It's just a CR.
Only explorer, yeah, yeah, sounds good.
Okay, currently you have, all your contracts are expired. B1's only one on a continued contract, because he is out here practicing, but he doesn't stand the current deal for 30 days, that's fine. I'd add that to the board.
Come March.
But, but as long as, you know, if we're spending whatever, I don't know, money and it's only a 10-week program?
It's 20 weeks out of the year.
Okay, even 20 weeks a year. Okay.
Let's uh, let's call the vote, all in favor?
Flavia had a question.
Would you amend your motion to revise the costs so we do not, we don't subsidize uh? For non-residents, for families, since we, you know, I want.
Well, if, if this, if this goes, I would be willing to uh, it just extend the current contract prices for the 30 days until we make the decision of.
That was last year, no change it any.
No change it now. No, we're just, 30 days.
Uh, with all due respect, we need to make sure that we're paying attention to what, what we're addressing here. So there's, what's on the agenda today is to look at the, the contracts. Um. The proposal that, the motion that's on the floor is to wait 30 days so we can go to the county and we'll vote on that. But this agenda, we haven't even discussed the agenda. We haven't given staff an opportunity to even talk about why they're making these proposals. So let's get through this motion and then let's actually have some discussion on the agenda item. So all in favor for the motion that's on the floor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. I, I couldn't hear if Mr., Mr. Guy, did you vote on that?
I did, I voted aye.
Okay, so a motion passes 4 to 1.
Okay, and then so, uh, to actually moving into the agenda item, Brian, you want to walk us through uh the purpose for these changes?
Sure, uh, Brian Rashir, Public Works Manager. Existing contracts expire 12/31 and L and I and staff kind of went through the existing contracts and we kind of noticed uh. Few things that were kind of standout that I guess when happened many years ago was just kind of like the Gateway District took it upon themselves and with partnerships with. Christian Soccer Association and Mr. Sherman, a few other players. Paint was just provided on a handshake. Uh, if you're not aware of it, the paint for the fields costs $5,000 to $6,000 about a year, the County Supplies Act. How I got involved with it was is all of a sudden I get a phone call from Mark Allison, we have no paint. Uh, field's got to be striped, we got to game starting. Well, if you're not aware of it, the paint is stored in our electrical closet down here at the end of the road, which is major, major big no-no. So this is how the storage thing got started, I'll get into the rest of that later. I said, okay, so he says, well, I need paint, it's part of your contract. I'm reading this going, okay, I don't see no paint in this contract. I ask Allison, what's up with this? She goes, well, it's a handshake agreement done many months ago. So I called the county or L did, got hold of the county, said, well, I can't have paint there for a week because I had no more, more notification in 24 to 48 hours. So, okay, we went down to Sherman Williams, we get the paint, bought 40 gallons of paint and about 600, 700 bucks off of 40 gallons of paint. Tony, the guy over here decides to stripe it on a Saturday. Tropical storm comes through Sunday and washes pretty much all the paint down the drain. Then I was told the next week, I need more paint, I just bought you 40 gallons, where'd it go? We used it all. I was like, whoa, luckily by then the county's paint showed up. We've had three big deliveries last fall for that paint. Currently I have about 25, 30 buckets over there now of paint. But I talked to the guy at the county, he is, before you discontinue, let me know from the board if you choose to decide it so he can go to his bosses. Because there was a gentleman's agreement, like I said, that worked out many months ago. But he told me they spend $5,000 to $6,000 supplying the paint for these fields. And those are fields that Flag Football, Gateway Soccer, the high school. Other than the high school, the rest of them are for profit folks. Mark's pulling a good 125 to 150 off you a year. Flag Football's about 75 to 80,000 a year. You deduct your field UCs, you're still pulling good money. Why can't they buy their own paint?
But the paint. My question is, is does the county supply the paint?
Yes, they do, the taxpayer do.
If, if the county supplies the paint, I guess, why is it so, why are we talking?
Exactly, well, the reason why we're talking about it is.
Reach out to the county. It's delivered, we have to do it, then we got to put it in our electrical room? What, why, why, why do we have to do that? Let them blow.
Good question.
Let them do that.
I'm all for it.
They want the paint, get the paint from the county, you have it.
And that's an option we can look at, that was one of the options I was recommending.
Get us out of the paint deal.
Nobody was telling you, you got to store it in electrical, you got to store it somewhere, but nobody said.
Far as I'm concerned, don't even store it here, period. There's a storage room right across the room, it's 82.
Was that closed?
That was an option I'm bringing up.
It hasn't been, the brains don't come in.
You, you're talking about the, the rental place?
Yes.
You put some paint in there?
I don't know.
They'll think you can.
But if we can't. If we have paint, we can find another place in the electrical room. I don't want it.
But my, my point is, and I would agree with you, if they, if, if the paint is free to provide by the county, I don't see any reason, just let them get the paint from the county?
And?
And we're out of it.
Yes, that, I agree with that too. Part of the goals, the benches?
Well, 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 we're going to go there. I guess it gets back to the heart of this gentleman, Mark Allison, said that he never saw it until he got this. One more discussion, Zell would talk about this though.
We sent this to Mark, he looked at it, there's nothing been changed at all. This is just bringing, brought to you guys, which you recommend, what you would like to do. I haven't done any changes, period.
Why would we get to this point, right? Till the district and the leagues have talked to get a brainstorming session with the stakeholders before something comes here. Pull something out of their butt and throw it in front of us, we're debating things we shouldn't be doing.
It's time. There's a, there's a problem here with, I think the, the root cause, if we listen to the reason why there was even an, an issue is because staff didn't order paint. In time.
We didn't know about it.
That's not true.
No, we, this has been the same process for 20 years, getting paint from the county, free. So if, if we don't know that we have to order paint from the county, then someone's not doing their job. And now whether, where, where to store it, if that's an issue, then I think we've got plenty of property. That the county owns between the onsite at the soccer complex and at the district facility that we've cleared out. That we're all sitting on, that we could store, uh, that we could store paint at no, at no charge. I don't, I don't understand why that's all of a sudden we want to charge for free paint that we're getting because someone didn't know to call the county, which I would dispute. Uh, gold, you're saying we've replaced six goals over the past nine years? That's a half a goal a year on average at cost of what? 2,000?
$2,000 a pair, we just bought them this last year, I had to buy a set.
Right.
Then we have to store, then we have to do the maintenance on them, replace the nets on them, we have to paint them, we have to do the constant upkeep.
It's the same thing we have to do with, with chairs at the pool, with the decking at the pool, these are amenities.
And I replace the nets.
Yeah, Mark.
I put the nets up, you just buy them, I put them up.
We supply.
They're in the storage room right now, so as soon as they need to be replaced, what I do is I go out and take care of it. So you're just buying them and putting them in the, the storage room. And you know, you don't have to do that much. The field paint's been there for years, you were given plenty of notice. The only time you had to pay for it is it wasn't ordered in time and you were left with no time to be able to stripe the fields, you had to go to Sherman Williams. It's all about communication, Brian, it always has been, and you just didn't communicate and that's the problem.
I, I think that the issue on the paint is if they're getting it from the counties, let them doing it and if it be done, it's not even an issue to talk about.
Yeah, I agree. I, I do have one question for paint before we leave it. You bought 40 gallons at $700 a gallon?
No, $600 total for all four gallons. We, we get a discount.
I got the $28,000.
The county, the county gets a discount for it, but that's just $600 for the 40, 70 gallons of paint.
I got the $28,000.
Now the paint, like I say, that's, we, we just want to get out of the paint business because we have no business to supply the paint. I mean, the benches and the goals, if you want to continue to buy the goals, then okay, that's fine, we'll put money in there for the goals. Uh, you're talking two grand a set. And my question is this, you have four regulation fields, then why don't you have eight regulation goals? Currently you have 24 goals over there, only two are regulation. So that means if any high school team, there's only one field they can play on or we have to move the goals. Because we have different sizes from U4 to U10, U12, they don't get a regulation goal until you get to U12 and above. So we supplied for the last 20 years, all the different goals for 65 to 70% are non-residents.
Actually, that's, that's not correct statement. The, the, this district, the district has supplied six goals. As far as a funding replacement, the original 20 whatever goals were, were gifted to the district from Gateway Soccer Association. So, from, from the Christian Soccer Association, CSL. So our costs, and, and, and again, to me, it boils down to planning. This is the same thing we do on the maintenance and utility side. We look at our inventory, we do a plan, a replacement maintenance plan, and we project that over time. So if, if we know we need to replace one set of goal per year, that's $2,500 that we need to budget each year. Put that into real rental costs that mark the competitive league and the high school absorb a portion of that cost. Um, it's, I, I don't think, the leagues, the leagues can't, can't. Fund the, the goals because one, they sit on our property, they're used by multiple entities. So it's, it's not even good business sense to, to push that back to them, we need to absorb the cost. We need to absorb the cost, we need to figure out how to incorporate that into our, our lease fees. Because those, that equipment is a part of the lease agreement, in my opinion. Same thing, same thing with. I think there's, there should be an adequate amount of storage that's inherent in the contract. Now, if there's additional storage that's needed, and we've got additional storage space available, then we can absolutely charge for that. But I think we need to give the leagues at least some space where they can store, uh, equipment that they need. Cause these guys are, they all have, these leagues, uh, managers have day jobs. It's not like they've got other storage units. They've got to store some of the stuff somewhere and that should be inherent in the total lease agreement. I don't think we should be charging, uh, for them to be able to store what they need. At some point, we've got to start thinking about how we're servicing this community and whether amenities are amenities. If we want all a hundred percent amenities within Gateway to be at zero cost, no impact to the taxpayer, then we need to look at either increasing fees, charging a membership to the pool and other areas because they're all the same. We want to charge, put a gate up in front of every park and have a key card with an additional cost to get in, that's where we need to go. But either amenities are an amenity that is not a hundred percent fully funded by revenue and it is partially absorbed by the taxpayer or not. But I have been in this community for fifteen years and to be quite honest, having people that do not leverage these amenities, making decisions around what we should spend for them, I think is unfair and unjust. And it's the wrong direction we should be going as a community. This, if, what we should be asking staff is get a detailed breakdown of what it costs for our amenities. Not a blanket three hundred thousand dollars, because that's not, that's not accurate. I've got a breakdown that, that Laura gave me that shows cost. And what we're spending for landscaping in these areas is ridiculous. So maybe we need to do a better job at contracting, uh, and cutting costs from an internal perspective. Instead of trying to put our leagues out of business by upping the cost to where our kids have nowhere to play and no dedicated leagues. Now, I do agree that there's, there's some other solutions. Handing this off to the county is not one of those, in my opinion. If, if you spend any time on fields, and I don't know if any of you that are sitting on the board have spent, uh, any time at county fields lately, but they are not poorly maintained. Or they are poorly maintained, they're not, they're not managed very well. We have some of the best fields in the county and our staff basically says that they're deteriorating and they're, they're, uh, uh, not, in not very good shape. I would argue that even in poor shape, our fields are much better than what the county maintains today. So if you're willing for our, uh, property values to deteriorate because we're going to hand over large acreage to the county to maintain, then, then we're not doing our job. Cause I think as a board, where we saw our responsibility is to maintain equity and property value and amenities is part of this community.
Go ahead.
Brian, question. If we were doing it right, how many soccer goals, nets do we need to be, let's say, be compliant or, uh, be, be in a position to have a good system? Do we need eight, ten?
Do you want regulation or do you want non-regulation?
Why would I do none?
Well, all these leagues over here, the majority of them are non-regulation, they're all U four, U six, U eight, each goal is different sizes.
So is that because that meets their goals or is it because it's just what we got?
That's because it meets GSA's goals, what they need for each league.
Okay, well then I'll go back. If we were putting in new goals to meet their regulations per field, ballpark, how many goals, nets do we need? Eight, ten?
Ten nets.
Okay. Ten times two grand each, average?
Yes, sir. So you have seven, seven twos. So you live at two to three thousand for a set. The last set we bought.
Twenty-nine top.
Twenty-five thirty.
Twenty-five thirty. And those are good for how many years?
And fifteen, twenty, all depends how well it's maintained.
So it's two grand a year?
Fifteen.
Two, two grand a year.
Exactly what I've said, yeah.
We then just simply.
We should be budgeting twenty-five hundred dollars annually to replace one goal a year.
And pass that cost on to the leagues and then they.
And pass, yeah.
I'm all for that.
That's a reasonable way of doing it.
But at the same time, look at.
Now we get into this.
One second.
Correct. Do we have a place that we can store the equipment that is needed by the, the leagues?
What we did this year is due to those and everything else, we dragged the goals out, we put them on a parking lot. So that way, A, they're not in the weather, they're not on the fields and the moisture and everything else causes them to rust. We put them all out here, so we roughly got twenty-something goals out in our parking lots, which.
But my question is, if we were doing it right, if we wanted to build a structure, first of all, do we have a structure that would house all the equipment?
No. You don't need a structure. Hey, Ed.
And only square feet.
Oh, I don't know.
Ed, Ed, you don't need a structure. Go, when you, when you leave Gateway, go run past JetBlue right now and look at how they've stored, uh, equipment. So there's a soccer league that uses JetWays or JetBlue's basically overflow parking, which is.
Well, I know where it's at, but what I'm worried about Doug is I want to extend the life and if I extend the life by having it in a building, then that's not.
Yeah, that's.
Building and investing in this parking lot, because you're leaving the garage.
There's no reason for you to store these, these soccer goals under any type of structure. Cause they're made, they're made to be outdoors. Where, where the iteration comes from?
Just put it out in the parking lot.
Okay, so the need here is, is that is there any need for item number one here on storage?
I have a question.
That has to do with you.
The only storage, that was a whole different stories and goals.
That's concession stand.
That's a concession stand storage.
And that's, I guess that's what my question, uh, because it's two in one, when Mark sent this to a storage fee, we have the concession storage fees. Do they store items in there too?
They store tons of stuff in three different closets. Currently you have Mark and flag football and our large concession stand storage over there. And how it came about is I had to get over there to get the exterminator in there because popcorn was left out and the rats got into it. So we had to get up into there and spray it. We took two weeks to get all the rats out, but it took me about fifteen minutes to make a hole for the guy, even get to the alley access. Cause they had boxes and everything else. I asked him to clean it, of course, it has not been done.
So, so they are using storage.
Our janitor.
That's not true, I, it has been done, it has been cleaned.
Oh, I got fixtures today, deserves a difference. But.
Have you been over to the electrical, have you been in the electrical room lately?
Yeah, that's another one I'm well at too. You got eleven by six storage area?
And that's, that's, that's a staff storage unit and that, that, I went in there last week, that thing's a wreck, there's stuff all over the place.
What's the dollar value of the storage item fees?
About forty-two dollars a month if you went across the street, public storage for eleven by six.
Okay, so what we're, what are we asking them for in return?
We were thinking something about forty bucks a month.
Forty bucks a month.
Then it's six by six, which is the back one, where, where they store their other stuff?
I hope we're, I hope we're not getting lost over forty dollars a month. Because what I'm going to break up later, this is a pit. I just don't see that station, forty dollars a month, that's, that's nothing.
Is that year round or just during season?
I'd just rather do it during season, but if they want year round, we can do year round, it's not a problem. But I just need it nice and neat so we actually get into our stuff. Cause it's a janitorial closet, we have two of them. Currently I have a grill in one of them back here that Gateway High School put in, that has to be.
My thing is if they get stuff in there, it's year round. If they don't have stuff in there year round, it's even season, I mean, make your, make your poison.
Well, the only other question I have related to this, apparently they add storage at one time and we also need to get rid of it?
Apparently, I guess at one time they had an old shed over here and apparently it disappeared some years back. And I used to keep their striping machine in there and I guess they put all their storage in there, it must've fell down or something down the road and now.
Do they have any, is there light on that?
So what, what it was is they're, again, Christian Soccer Association, when they gifted, uh, the, the goals, uh, all the equipment that was purchased inside the concession stand, anything that was, that they had purchased, which was also a, I think like a fifteen by twenty storage unit. They, whoever was district manager, uh, about two years after that, made the decision that there was some repairs that needed to be made. So instead of doing those repairs, they basically tore the building down. Which forced the leagues to store their stuff somewhere else, which is in that clause about concession stand. And so the board is, so let's, so the board knows what, what's being stored in there. It's, uh, flags for, for the fields. It's, uh, equipment that flag football uses. Uh, there's some bins with, you know, some of the end zone markers and, and cones. There. I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're right, Doug, you're right, everything you're saying is right.
Yeah, so it's, it's not like it's, it's a ton of stuff. Uh, I think it's an opportunity to maybe better organize the one closet that these leagues use it. So the leagues are only using one closet and it happens to be in the same area where we've got some, some cleaning equipment. Uh, so I, I think the solution.
Focus, rent a storage unit, put it back there in that corner and be done with it.
The storage unit's not being used for anything else, Doug. It's not being used for anything else.
Yeah, there's, you know, and, and we've got other areas, uh, that I think if, if the leagues needed additional storage, we could charge for additional storage. But I think we need to give them that one closet for them to share, uh, as just part of, I mean, just being a good management company and saying, we're going to give you a place to store your equipment so you can, to continue to provide services for our children in this community. And not nickel and dime these, these, these leagues. I mean, we're, we're charging increases in lighting, charging in fields, and no one can tell me why we're doing that. We did a study, we did, hold on, we did a study a couple of years ago when April was here and we are still lower than any other facility in two to three counties with what we charge. So I just, raising five dollars, I don't know why we're doing that. Uh, unless we determine that we're, we're no longer going to have, we're no longer want our taxpayers to pay for amenities. That it's going to be a hundred percent funded. And if you do that, you have to include the other amenities that we have, which is the pool and other areas. We have far more volume at the soccer field through flag and our, and our league programs than we do swimmers at the, at the pool. But if we had, you know, that group from, that does aerobics come in and say they needed the pool open an hour early or needed some equipment, I don't know if we would have such harsh criticism of that group as, as we do with these leagues that are providing a service for our children. Uh, I just, I don't understand it.
Doug, there's a big, there's a big difference. One big difference. Somebody taking money out of this and going the other one, somebody isn't even making any money. That's the difference.
So would, so would we, would we be more accommodating for these leagues if they didn't make any money? Is the, is the, is the country club charged?
Financial information and that was dropped. How in the difference do we know what it is?
Why does it matter? I mean, we're leasing these fields for service. Are we saying that if someone does a great job and, uh, and actually provides a profit, that we should charge them more for the same facilities as someone else?
My, my thing is right now, my heart constituents is.
Does the, does the country club charge you more than someone else because of your net income?
As I said, I am coming from my constituents that are tired of this being used fifty percent by out of Gateway residents. They have no problem with them using it, pay their same family share. And if that works out forty-five dollars a family, then it's forty-five dollars.
Well, and that's a different discussion. And I don't disagree with you that, that if there is a, a, a charge for non-Gateway members, that, but that's, that's one thing. It's another thing for us to want to charge these leagues to use the concession stand, to use the storage. Are we going to pay, charge them for parking next? I mean, at some point, we got to say, look, the services that these leagues provide is a benefit to this community. Having amenities is a benefit to this community. Once we all agree there, then that's fine. Now, if it's a matter of who's leveraging those amenities and whether it should be apples to apples, then that's, that's another discussion that I think we need to have. Now, we also need to be careful that if we overcharge for non-Gateway members, it could stop them from participating, which could dwindle the numbers down to where it could impact the leagues being able to operate. So we have to think about that too.
Well. Brian, let me ask you this. The picture that we, we just saw here, are those items just from the soccer or from the three leagues that we currently are using?
That's two closets, isn't it?
Okay.
You have Gateway High School in the back with a grill and a small stuff in the back concession stand. Flag football and the large concession stand along with Gateway soccer. The paint is in the electrical room, which we're going to address, getting that cleaned up this week. But my concern is, I don't know any other complex that the county owns that lets people store stuff for free. And then just let it, however you want to put it in there, nice, neat, clean, whatever. I mean, it's up to you guys, you want to leave it that way, then we'll just work around it.
Three facilities to do that.
So throw everything out, put it all back in, we can do that.
Could we, could we do like a set amount of space for each at no charge? And if you go above that and we're charging, I mean, because we're.
Well, that's what we do today. We give them, we get flag and soccer, the one closet, uh, that's connected to the concession stand. They've been using it for years. Now granted, does it get a little messy at times? Yes. Do I think the leagues need to, uh, do a little bit better job in organizing? Yes. So that's something we can push for them. But that's, that's what it's been doing for, for twenty years. And there's never been an issue until every once in a while, someone from staff will come over and will come up with some reason why we need to start charging the leagues more. And I mean, Brian, all you would have had to have done is if you had an exterminator coming over on Thursday, if you would have let the leagues know a week in advance that you've got the exterminator coming over and they need to clean it up, they would have cleaned it up.
Doug, I gave him a month if I'm cleaning it up, and he didn't come cleaning it up.
The league, the league. Mark, did you, Tim, did you guys, you notified a month in advance that an exterminator was coming and you needed to clean up your, your area?
There has not been one thing that Brian said was factual, quite frankly, but no, I was never told that there was exterminator coming. Because you know, Doug, if he had asked me, I would have been over there in a heartbeat. Because the last thing I want to do is upset any of the staff, because this is the end result. This is what we deal with. We waste our time discussing all of this stuff when there's never been a problem until Brian shows up and starts telling everybody these things that aren't factual. None of it's factual.
I think what Brian said, that he asked for it to be clean. I don't, I don't think he mentioned that the exterminator was coming, but he did request to be clean. I, I really do think we can come halfway into this. I'm not so concerned about the paint. I believe for the equipment, maybe now dividing in three because the C D president do use it, so we divide that in four. So two hundred and fifty dollars a year for entity is nothing.
It's easier, well, no, don't divide by the residents, they've already paid for it in their base. Divide it by the other three and divide it on revenue received. I mean, if you have two hundred thousand coming in and it's a hundred fifty fifty, then divide it a half, quarter, quarter. That's easy.
Mark, let me ask you this, for the concession stand for storage, uh, what is your intent? Do you want to keep it for all year or you want to keep it for just during season? And maybe we can even do that during season, uh, we won't charge, but then you have to remove it, you know, from the rest of the year. What do you prefer? Do you prefer to have it every year, all year long or just during season?
I'm sorry, was that question directed at me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just to clarify, the small storage area to the, to the side of the concession stand is the only one that leagues typically utilize year round simply because of the items that are stored in there, the size of them, et cetera. It becomes difficult to move them back and forth because we don't have storage of our own. Uh, we're talking about a storage room that's probably six feet wide by twenty feet long. So it's not a big area. And I agree that there are times that we could have done more to keep them clean. But we've addressed that with Chris last year and I feel confident that both flag and myself have done everything we can to maintain that. Outside of, you know, uh, the, the running of the, the seasons. So in the off-season, we make sure they're clean before we leave. The concession stand, the only things that are in there are some ice chests that we left. Now, I'm not disputing that we could do more, um, to maintain that, but the bottom line is this. No communication ever comes out of the staff or the operations team to let us know that there's an issue until we get to this point. And we're not children. We recognize the fact that if you said to us, you've got to do something with the concession stand, we need to deal with this. Then the first thing that Tim and I are going to do is go over there and take care of it, as we have done in the past. What's frustrating for both of us is the fact that we get driven under the bus here as if we're not grownups and we've not been doing this for years. And this discussion is, the whole purpose of me writing the statement is to give you an idea of the fact that at no point is the operations team communicating anything with us. We have to read down to them and when we ask them to do something, they usually come back with a very negative attitude and it's frustrating for both of us.
But at this time, we're talking forty dollars a month.
So back to my question, you, you, it sounds, in recap, it sounds like you want it all year round for the storage?
Yeah.
The, if you want the ice chest out of the concession stand so that we don't have to have a fee, we can take an ice chest out of the concession stand.
But what she's saying is more, the league needs to.
I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. I don't think Doug and Mark can make this, but I'm looking at a picture that, um, it's, it's, it's not, it's a lot of stuff. So that I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing when I.
What, what you, to answer your question, Flav, because I don't think, I don't think Mark addressed it. The leagues need a place to store some equipment year round. Cause it doesn't make sense for them to pull them out for two months and then bring it back over and it's just, that's, it's not efficient. So they do need a space. Because it doesn't make sense for them to pull it out for two months and then bring it back over, and it's just, that's, it's not efficient. So they do need a space annually, uh, which is what they've used that one closet for, is to store stuff that needs to be maintained and held for use either during season and stored during off season. And we don't, no, there's no reason that, that, that district has anything to store in there at this point. So-
Yeah, they take it out, it's good, yeah.
Yeah.
It just seems to me the answer is, they just go with twelve months of storage and if it's forty dollars a month, it's forty dollars a month and we're done with it.
Well, I don't think we should be charging them for the one storage unit. I think that should be just inherent because the, why, why is the reason all of a sudden that we're trying to charge them for storage? Is it because we're trying to generate more revenue? If so, how much revenue do we need to generate in order to make this board happy? Is it a hundred percent? Okay, well then we need to triple, quadruple the lease agreement, which is basically gonna run these leagues out of business. At some point, we have to say, you know, amenities are amenities, services are services. And that what they're being charged today is fair and equitable based on what is being charged in other lease, which we've already done this two years ago. We did thorough review, actually might even been less than a year ago, where we looked and analyzed all the county, county and private property and what they're charging, and, and we were right within average. So I don't understand what's driving this. Like, leave well and well enough alone. The staff, we need to hire someone that actually is a benefit to the leagues, a benefit to the community, and, and not someone trying to tear the leagues down or charge and, you know, I, I just don't understand why we keep having to have these conversations. And I am one that is not only supportive of the leagues, but I, my kids have participated in them, but I'm also one that's, that has agreed to increases and agreed to other things because I'm, I'm trying to do what's right for the community. But the direction we're going in right now, nickel and dime these leagues, is not something that, that I feel comfortable with because there's no purpose. Tell me, like, if you have a problem with, with what we're spending, then let's all agree on what is fair for our taxpayers to pay, and then let's, let's readjust. Now, we might put some of these leagues out of business, um, but arbitrarily just raising five dollars here and there with no justification just makes no sense to me. We wouldn't do that for other vendors. Uh, we definitely wouldn't accept it if someone was arbitrarily raising costs for us. So it just doesn't make sense to me. So what I would like to do to move forward is I would really wish staff would have gotten with these leagues prior to this meeting and sat down and said, hey, these are the problems that we have. This is what we're proposing. Let's work through it. Uh, which was not done. So now we have to spend an hour talking about field amenities and things that have really not a whole lot of justification, in my opinion, from what Brian has said, any, any reason to warrant these increases or, or charges, period.
Well, I, I think, I'm a little bit different. I, I think staff has done what I want, would want staff to do, and that is to come to me with what they see as the issues. There's nothing near, to my knowledge, I don't see a gun to my head that says I have to agree with them on any of these items. Uh, I think, I think they need to be discussed. We now have thirty days to where you can get with the leagues and talk about them uh more, but I'm more concerned, if, if forty dollars a month is a problem to somebody on one of these leagues, uh, then they've got a real problem. Uh, I'm more concerned about things like the lighting. We went to twenty, from twenty-five to thirty dollars is my understanding. Is that correct?
Twenty-three to twenty-five.
Twenty-three to twenty-five. What was the justification?
Justification, we put a hundred thousand dollars in those LED lights. Now I have about twenty ballast boxes that need to be replaced at roughly five to six thousand dollars a box.
I'd, I'd rather do that in different, how was the, let's go backwards. How was the twenty-three calculated? Is that usage?
That was done years ago. Okay, here's, here's-
Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Here's, here's how I would propose to do this. And I thought, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought, now I wasn't on the board at the time, but I thought April went through this uh process and came up with a price. I'd like to see the electrical or the lighting in this done in two components. Wood, water, what is our true cost of paying FPL for the, for the pack, for hours?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Bill.
I've moved that this item be tabled until the staff and the representatives of the league can get together as you suggested and iron this out to the best of everyone's satisfaction, understanding that these amenities are very important to the whole of Gateway.
Well, just keep in mind-
Ed, Ed, one second, please. So there is a thirty day, uh, so you guys passed a thirty day hold on this item. What I would recommend is, as part of that thirty days, that staff do some due diligence around, uh, continue due diligence around the electrical uh lighting expenses, and that there be some discussions with staff and the leagues to try to come up with some solutions that, that both the leagues would get behind and that staff can agree to. So I shouldn't have to, the board should not have to get up here and discuss items that are uh, that have not been prior discussed with the leagues at some level. It's just, it doesn't make any sense to me, and it's not, it's not good business.
Honestly, is I don't wanna wait that thirty days and then have somebody bring up a question, well, why did you bring that up before? I'm bringing it up now. On the electrical, let's have two cost components. We have an electrical cost component for the actual usage. I have a feeling that that's gonna drop this number significantly because it's not that high.
Yeah.
But let's have the cost of the capital that Brian's talking about, sort of like a capital reserve. What is our cost? What are you going into this thing for electrical?
I completely agree with you.
Divide the two, and then that cost per year is going to have to go into the budget, just what they pay. It's that, it's that simple.
I, I, I agree with you, and that's, that's basically what April had did uh a couple of years ago. She looked at what was, what was the actual expense of the electrical to run, to maintain the fields. And then, and then she put on top of that um capital expenses, and that's why it's at twenty-five. So it doesn't cost them uh twenty-five dollars to run lights for an hour at night. It doesn't cost that. Uh, the reason why-
I didn't see the two.
The reason why it's at twenty-three is because what, what staff did a couple of years ago was they took, uh, they took the amount it takes to power on average, how, how much usage the fields uh have per, per night, per field, come up with that, with that amount, which is what you asked for. And then uh, staff took into any capital expenses that were to come over the next ten or twenty years and bake that in. So that's where the twenty-three seventy-five justification comes from. So arbitrarily throwing five dollars on top of that, there's no justification for it. That's my problem. So I agree with you, Ed. I think that's the right thing to do. Uh, it makes perfect sense.
Then the other one I'd like to see is, I'd like to see a detailed breakdown of the operating cost of that soccer field such that we can determine what the value is per year on that so that we can calculate what the non resident rate is going to be. I have-
And I, and I would ask you, and what I would ask is, let's do that for amenities, period. Because a lot of times when staff talks about cost, they, they talk about parks and wrecks, which is a large portion of the soccer field, but there's also a large portion that's the pool, the fun park and other areas. So I'd like to see it broken down specifically for those, those separate areas.
For profit on the, on those other amenities. That's the difference. Big difference.
Not.
The big, big difference. That's, that's apples and oranges all the way.
Brian, do you think you can get uh the information for the electrical within like two weeks and then maybe before we come back in the thirty days, you could meet with Mark and then I would, if, if, uh, Doug, if you're okay, I would like to join.
Sure.
Maybe you, me and Mark can kind of take a look at this before we come back to the board, so maybe in a few weeks.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah, do you think you could be able to get those, we can, we can, I think that's easy.
It's, it's not easy. It's, it's real not.
Well, I can get it.
I, I still have trouble getting the iteration calls, but then, and let's drop away from the late family.
Okay. All right, so, uh, so I appreciate it. Um, so we're going to table this for thirty days. Uh, Chris is gonna reach out to the county, uh, which I completely agree, disagree with, but, and then we're also gonna have uh some conversations between staff and the leagues. Flavi is gonna act as our, our supervisor uh, uh, kind of sponsor for that. Uh, we're also gonna look for staff to come back with some more details around cost to manage uh the amenities, specifically breaking down the uh, you know, landscaping, maintenance, capital, uh, electrical, and have all that come back to the board so we know exactly what, what, what we're spending for these, for these areas. Did I miss anything?
No.
Look, one pursuit that will take effect, and we have no control of it, partly county. I talked, we met with the principal over there. If you wish to book the overflow parking, you'll have to go to Facilitron and book that. The county school system, you can reserve that, but you have to go through a website now to do that. We cannot do that for you. The person who is renting that or using that, it's free use, but you'll have to go through the school to do that.
So then you're marketing out of leads after that themselves?
Correct. Go ahead and set an account up. We have that information.
So last part now, would you send an email to all three leagues and then just talk me on it, letting them know what's happening, what you just said?
George is going to.
And, and at these prices, these prices we have, existing and proposed, the school pays those same prices. Schools are cheaper because they're not profit. Or is, why not? If you look at those, these rates are the rates that we're assessing to the leagues, the same we're assessing to the school.
The charter school does pay for Peter.
The charter's fee, charter's-
Through historical agreement, I think it has one more year in effect. It was a settlement from over collection of assessment fees. They do not pay to use the fields. They pay for the lights, but no fields.
Correct.
The light, the light, the light usage is the same for, but, but that's got a sudden set on it in one year. It's one.
The charter school has to, is it for profit?
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, they have till twenty-twenty.
They got, they got the same deal. They're going to be renegotiating.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's move forward. So thanks, uh, uh, thanks for some really good dialogue. Uh, I know when we talk about this, there's differences of opinion. I, I have full faith in this board that we'll be able to come to uh an agreement uh that benefits this community. Uh, so thanks for everyone's input. Moving on uh to uh staff reports, uh, district attorney. And by the way, we're about an hour, almost an hour behind, so uh, let's, 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 uh, let's be diligent.
That will catch up when we get to that item because you skipped it.
Yeah, it's only your fourth uh meeting.
Yeah. Hey, I, I, I've got a record I'm trying to maintain here. Okay, uh, Tony, you're up, buddy.
So it's discipline arms, so we know it's Tony. So the good news is, I think I'll be faster than Tony would have been. So we have, um, Tony gave me six issues to report on. Uh, the first one is the uh A D T demand letter was sent on January sixth, so it was sent yesterday. And um he would like to follow with an agenda item on the January twenty-first board meeting. So they had fourteen days to respond to that demand letter and then-
I would, which is what?
It's the Stony Brook.
The, the thing for the guardhouse at Stony Brook where they're paying a hundred and fifty-five dollars a month, and there was no contract, no equipment or anything there.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I already, I have the agenda item written up for the next meeting.
Okay, great. Uh, number two is the Comcast, Comcast vendor damage to the C D D stormwater pipe in Gateway Greens. Um, Tony said that he was updated by Chris as to the status of a claim, and he is now preparing to follow, um, preparing a follow-up demand letter on that. Number three is amendments to the permit criteria manual. Notice of rule development was published, uh substantially draft, proposed, revised, P C M distributed and circulated on staff, management and consultants. The draft redline showing proposed amendments will be included in the January twenty-one agenda with authorization request to advertise for public hearing on March fourth, twenty twenty-one. Okay, the fourth one is utilization of fire impact fee credit sale proceeds for Pelican Preserve Construction Road. Tony had a conversation with bond counsel and she is researching the issue as to whether or not those funds will be available for use in other Pelican Preserve Phase One projects to free up cash for the road construction project. So I assume we will have something to report at the next meeting. Uh, number five, Tony will have a report or memo to Chris by next Monday, January eleventh, on review of the C five residences of the Caillou Pelon plans, if I said that correctly. And the last is Tony is continuing to follow up with Randy Cerchi as to the FPL easement lands and assurances as to D R I compliance with open space and recreation acreage. So if anyone has any questions that you would like for me to go back to Tony, well, that's not me to do so. That's all we have to report on today.
Anything further on the Pelican uh road, D R I change? Emergency access room?
Uh, as I heard, as I was pushing it through the holidays and I was told to wait until after the holidays.
What did you ask Tony?
He, he followed up on it, and um, I, they're still working on it.
I, I think the only thing I would suggest to Tony is indicate that my deal was on that FPL, go to Randy, don't piss him off, on asking for a letter that here the board, not one single person in the county's been willing to go. Let's book it and run with that FPL easement and be done with it. We're just stalling on that FPL easement, waiting for adoption. County for whatever reason doesn't want to offer. And my thing is, it, it doesn't mean anything. It, it, it's worthless.
Ed, uh, this is Tony. I hear you, Ed. I'll keep on with Randy and John Fradema.
Bring it up, Tony.
Uh, Ed, I heard you. I'll keep working with Randy and John Fradema. I got an email back from Andy yesterday. I'll keep pushing it.
You broke up, Tony. Say again.
Uh, I had, I, I had a follow-up email from Randy yesterday after I followed up with him on the day before, and I will keep pushing Randy and John Fradema to get a solution.
When did bond counsel think that they're gonna be back with an answer on the impact fees?
She, uh, she, she was gonna retrieve all the material. I will touch base again with Sandy tomorrow. She was, uh, I did not realize that she actually had worked on that project back in two thousand and three, the original bond issue. So she was very familiar with it. Uh, we'll touch base with her again tomorrow. In, in fact, Ed, one, one thing she was thinking, whether or not, uh, you know, be, because if it benefits all of the, the first phase, doesn't matter whether or not the monies are used in the second phase if it benefits the person, the people in the first phase. She's looking at all that.
Absolutely benefits the first.
I'm sorry?
Bob, Bob indicated that it absolutely benefits the first phase.
Yeah, and that's right. And she, she, she and I were talking about it, and so she just wants to make sure that there's not an issue about having to pay down any of the remaining indebtedness, uh, and so that people in, in phase one can't fuss how it was used.
Got you.
I don't have any questions.
By the way, I appreciate your indulgence. I just finished a planning mission here.
Tony, we lost you. Sounds like you fell off your bar stool.
Uh, I wish, Ed, I wish. Here I am. Hang on. Uh, there I am. Sorry.
There you go.
Okay. Uh, so anything else from uh counsel?
Not unless there are questions.
Yeah. Uh, any, any questions? Okay, uh, district engineer.
Hey, good afternoon. This is Stephen Agapi at Tetra Tech. Um, first item up is a task authorization. Uh, this is, um, this goes along with the roundabout, um, utility relocation at Griffin Drive and Gateway Boulevard. Um, staff asked us to prepare a task authorization. Um, this will cover design, bid assistance and permitting of the force main north of the roundabout through Caillou Pelon through a proposed easement. Hey, Tony, I don't know if, um, you're still there, but I'm getting a lot of feedback on my end. I don't know if, maybe that's someone else.
He's uh muted.
Yeah, he's in his car.
Can you bring up page one of the agreement, uh, Chris? Just so that everybody understands, I talked to Tetra Tech earlier today about this. It, uh, just a typo and then, uh, you know, but if everybody would go down in that paragraph, uh, the first paragraph, the background, about halfway down, it says essentially this effort would require cutting in a tree and vows, promise to, vows in the blank to, what that should say is cutting in vows in the twelve inch and existing six inch force mains and necessary connections to the sixteen inch so that it can go east across the road. So that, that, that's confusing. Uh, somebody might look at this and say, man, this is one heck of a lot of work. Well, there is one heck of a lot of work to make this happen. The other issue is, is that it's not defined here, uh, and I didn't see a map. It says, and then extending the force main approximately seven to a hundred feet east along Griffin Drive, tying into the force main along Griffin Drive, which helps to make sense to the Westland Timber Plant. Stephen wasn't sure, but I thought our concept was that since we had the right of way, once we get out of that easement, we would extend that force main east along the north side to a point that where it's almost parallel to where the two force mains come out of the pump station that go across the road and connect. If we would take that and tie in, what is it, a six and an eight or an eight and ten, twelve? It's an eight and twelve, six and twelve. So it's a six and twelve coming out of that station. Going across the road, tying into a six and twelve. So if we just connect the six and twelve right there on that side, on the north side, we eliminate any future problems of any road expansion or anything that has to get back in there and do that task. We already have it done. So I would like to have that clarification, but other than that, I reviewed the whole thing and it looks very good to me and I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Tinkle, I'm going to make a comment. One of the reasons we looked at doing this was, A, we didn't want to interfere with the development of KO. It depended on where and when they were going to start to develop that property, even though they'll be working mostly landscape easement upfront, it wouldn't be a big issue. And the second one was to get that work out of the way before they started into the roundabout. So it would be out of the way. So we wouldn't have some of these valve issues and other issues in there. But at the moment, the development schedule for KO has been extended out because of some core engineering and wetlands. So they said they probably won't. And I do not at the moment have the final easement from them. They're working on the survey. I expect to have it in a few weeks, but I would be remiss to say I would wait a couple of weeks till we had that easement in hand till I executed this agreement.
Okay, I was aware that that was an issue. I was with Rick Ryelinski last week and I didn't think everything else was an issue.
No, they had some title problems that their surveyor can't finish the survey to issue the easement exhibit. So that's what it is.
There's another issue too that I did run into when I was over in their office. This understanding, one of these drawings that we had received, and I don't know what the authorship of it was, but remember the road coming out of KO was not lined up at the crossover in Gateway Boulevard, that was an error. Evidently with changes to KO, somebody went from a smaller, you know, repeat that we had that issue once before. Think they happened to be. The road is where we thought the road would be. So the issue of where that comes across and ties down, Chris is going to issue like whatever now on that sixteen inch. In other words, they haven't changed their plans at all. The road is always where its plans are being. So here's something to hold off on this until we have assurance of easement.
Have these in hand. It should be a couple of weeks, maybe four at the most.
Then I would change the motion to approve this condition upon receipt of the proper documents of the easement from Chris or that he's received them and that he has the authority then to go on ahead and issue the proposed procedure.
Mr. Tinkle, was part of that. Chris, if you can make sure that the easement documents would be provided to me as well as a title policy or affidavit and because if there is mortgage on a property, we need to have the mortgage holder join in to the easement.
That's a good point.
All right, I have a motion.
May I comment?
That was Stephen.
Stephen, yeah, may I comment? So we spoke to Rick and, you know, I think your concern is valid about, you know, the easement. Me and Danny talked to him this afternoon. We know you talked to him recently as well. He doesn't see any like unforeseen circumstances that would prevent the easement from happening. You know, it's just really doing paperwork. So with that being said, you know, if we're going to wait thirty days or longer to wait for these men and then start the design, that might put us, you know, behind the eight ball with trying to meet scheduling with the county to keep this project moving forward. It also kind of puts us at a standstill with the current design for the roundabout. You know, as there's not like a clear path to go forward, so.
Can you live with two weeks?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Can you live with two weeks?
Two weeks. I think two weeks is fine.
I'd say Chris has two weeks to get a response. If not, I'll just call Rick tomorrow and say what the hell is going on. Get this in me.
I spoke to him this morning.
Okay.
Chris, do you want to call? Call the vote individually?
Sure, and I'll, I'll call the vote. The motion is to pursue with the task order, providing two more weeks and getting that task order in place to allow the excuse me, get the easement in place to allow the task order to move forward. I'll call the vote. Mr. Geppert?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
No.
Motion passed as four to one.
Okay, our next item is the task authorization updates. There's nothing really noteworthy that's changed since the last update. We're continuing to work on all the projects. Do you guys have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I have one also. Task order nineteen thirteen, Design Services. I'm reading it here that it says you receive the sixty percent comments from staff on October the ninth, revising the plans accordingly. And the new design includes the termination of the drain lines into the lake at the top of the bank. Are these the downstop lines and things?
Yeah, this is where there will be a bubble up box at the top of the bank that'll tie into any existing downspouts from property owners or it'll just be a dead end box. And then staff recommendation has been to include an eight inch line from that bubble up box underneath the stabilized shoreline and into the water below water and then out about ten feet into the water.
That's the question. When, when did that direction come, the change? So what was the basis?
And that was part of the sixty percent comments from staff.
Those from staff?
Yes.
Has the board commented on that yet?
No, we haven't received the final plans back yet.
But we're spending money to study what that costs?
We're spending money to design that, put that into the plans and cover that in the plans.
Stephen, do you have any idea what added cost?
Just to yeah, to follow up on that. So what I've done is just revised our detail because it's a standard cross section detail. I've updated that and then I've sent it out to some of the local contractors to, you know, pick their brain and see what the increased cost will be. There are quite a few bubble up boxes. So I mean, there's quite a few, there's a couple hundred of them. So I would assume that it'll be more than a thousand dollars a pop. So I mean, we're talking, you know, substantial amount of money increase to the project.
Stephen, are you saying that we're going to have right now like on my lake where we have a bubble box, inner of a bubble up box every other lot line? And it overflows the draining lines coming on my roof, my neighbors drain into that, bubble up and go down across the top and the stone?
The sheet was now.
She, yeah, it knocks the velocity down.
So what this proposal is, is that they're now going to extend the bubble up. And that's what I'm kind of questioning.
You mean the bubble box will stay, but it's going to have an outlet.
It's additional.
It's going to have a pipeline out.
Into the pond. And I, we tried that in Pelican and it was no benefit. So I'm questioning why we'd want to spend that money this way.
What was the thought, what was the thought on that? What would staff say to do that? Because I would even question that also.
On ten nine.
Did you hear that?
The date of October nine.
October nine, yeah.
So where did that come from?
Yeah, so.
Of Brian.
So the bubble up boxes are going to have a six inch pipe coming out of them that goes under the Artamax or the filter fabric. And I'm assuming it's going to be compacted and goes out to the lake below the huge rock donut at the bottom of the toll slope?
Yes, sir. That was what was requested, but instead of a six inch and eight inch.
And, and the turtles and the, what's our other favorite fish? Not coral.
Placos. Placos, the costumists.
What are we going to do to keep those little boogers out of there?
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I just question. That's why I'm.
Man.
That's a lot of money. And I don't, we didn't see much payback. And we tried both of them. I'll just say that. We did it that way initially. We walked away from it because it was particularly no benefit.
Brian, do you want to?
Staff, we met, we sat down with the two contractors that perform our ponds, met with Matt Tire and I met with Abby and L and I, and we all stormed brains and say, what do we think that could prevent future washouts? Abby and both Chris both said, he says, you ought to change your size of your bubble box for one, little twelve is not big enough. If you're going to put between the houses, you should at least make it eighteen so two pipes get tied into it from the gutters. But then he said, I continue that pipe into the pond because what will happen is every time you'll have another washout. Now you got to deal with a rock on top of it. It's head some over year that the woods aren't ready.
And so your backup is if you get a plug at the end of the lake, it bubbles back up through the deal and still goes into the lake.
Yes, sir. And we just proposed it to Tetra Tech. There's nothing.
No, 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 I'm not questioning the process.
No.
I'm just wondering is the value add? From my experience that we've had five years up now. I don't see a word of money.
I was just listening to the gentleman who performed the work.
I'm just.
Metro and Matt Tire both do this all over the place. And after experiences with Flavia's pond, they both said, I would recommend at least putting a bigger bubble up box instead of twelve. You might get eighteen because then your pipes are big enough to both go into it. Whether you run a pipe in the pond for that or not.
That's a lot of questions.
If.
From the pond, from the bubble up to the pond.
I was listening to the experts that tell me it was beneficial.
The pride box would be a box that would be three feet long, which would knock the velocity down on the runoff.
Correct. An eighteen by eighteen.
Much longer box than I need a wide.
You got a twelve by twelve, which is that big. He was saying go an eighteen by eighteen wants to catch more of it.
Or go eighteen by twelve. I don't care. Just as long as it goes along the shorelines longer to have more.
That's, then they recommended, if you want to do that, then you make it an eight inch to go into there and take the water away.
Without engineering a mirror, the size of the box, twelve by twelve or twelve eighteen, whatever, depending upon the calculation of the roof, how much roof is coming through there. So we did that and we came up with a twelve by twelve. It's satisfying everything but our cows. But, and here's the big but, going from the bubble up box under the bank into the pond was a significant expense without, at least right now with five years data without payback. So I would not like to spend that money.
So let me ask you this. When you, when you're talking about the data, it'll be a little bit different because you're talking about banks that have lot rolls. We have banks now that have rocks. So we actually don't really have apples to apples to compare.
Okay, both.
So that would be one thing for me. Two, I mean, the size of the drain, I was surprised that they put it in that small because the first time that they did it in September eighty three, it was a small one and it was one call out saying that when we do it, it's going to be a bigger one and it didn't. The third, I really almost think it has to be pond by pond. I'm just going to give eighty three as an example. We have sixty homes around the pond. Eight has gutters around the house. So why did we went in and put sixty drains around the pond when now one not only has to put gutters around their house and then go down? I don't think we're going to ever see that. And then finally, and then all of this, we had eight that actually had gutters and they were connected to the pond. From eight, three of them after Abby left, they were not connected. So they cut it. They went all the way. They just left maybe like four feet between the drain boxes. So then I, I had an erosion in somebody's backyard and it was flooding between three homeowners to the front of their yard. So there's like multiple things that we should be looking at. And I almost think it's pond by pond.
So you're saying the owners didn't make the connection from their root drains out to the box?
No, Abby didn't. It was originally the homeowners.
Homeowners went out, but it was just a straight shot in.
What homeowners had was a straight shot all the way out in the pond with existing pipe. When Abby came through, we cut them all out. But he didn't hook it back up to the bubble box. And what happened was now you got flooding and Flavia brought my attention level. Then I had to come back and tie it back into the bubble box.
So the part of which it was cut off just at the perimeter of the O B, it hadn't been connected.
Correct. So they had to come back and tie the pipe foot in.
I think you're hitting one good point is I love to see what the price differential is because on a per box, every other lot line has a lot of money.
Thousands and thousands of dollars. A lot of money.
I think it was six thousand for eighty three and we had sixty boxes. Just the boxes, not going all the way up.
Yeah, you could do about like.
I mean, and for me, I mean, I believe it was a waste of money because given that.
Well, this is what we perforated the pipe. We had to be solid wall pipe going down.
Yeah, you can't use.
They use perforated underneath.
It closes up the whole thing. But, but the size of the bubble up, I will, in other words, time with our twelve by twelves.
This was our recommendations engineers. I mean, they're diligent to settle the cost and be there.
But let's, let's separate that last segment from the bubble up under and in the pond as a standalone cost item so that can be considered. Because I think you're going to be appalled at what's going to cost.
Okay.
Go ahead, look at that.
Bob, let me ask you this. If we, if it becomes that adding the extra pipe from the bubble up over the pond, it's, you know, it's not something they want to do. Do we, do we really even want to add the bubble up boxes in some of the cases?
Well, you have to have the bubble up at the top as a terminus point.
But it could be added later on if there's.
That's absolutely right.
These are we can just do this in alternate. And then you've got the numbers.
We didn't put it in, Paul. If you had some really questions, we didn't put it in if the homeowners didn't.
It just.
Then you know what the cost is.
Everybody put it in the house, house is there for them. They didn't do it. We didn't, we put it there.
It's a beautiful price. We worked to see how it goes. But I'm just bringing that salty is going to be. Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Any update on SRF? I've got people in Gateway Greens asking when's our pond going to be next for lake bank restoration? A lot of frustration.
I mean, they're still waiting for new funds in August.
Say it again.
They're, the SRF is still waiting for new funds to come in at their fiscal year in August.
No money till August.
No money till August. Okay. And we're still waiting. Where is Stephen Blue on the calculation of SRF versus?
Commercial.
Commercial.
We'll bring that to the meeting on the twenty first and we have a great discussion.
I hope they aren't out of money. And wait a minute, that's, that's day of inauguration. They may be out of money.
They burn washing.
I got the match.
Moving right along.
Moving right along, Mr. Chairman. We'll move into the district manager report and I just have status updates. Roundabouts moving along. We have updated project schedules. They are on schedule. They are on budget. We haven't had any significant issues down there. And a few minor ones we've had between the engineer and contractor that have been able to work around it. We do have a meeting tomorrow with Lee County Utilities, one of our regular meetings to discuss utility and business issues. Unless anybody has any questions, Kenny has an update on fire hydrant, lift station repairs and a few other items.
I actually, did we have an update on the roundabout, the roundabout plans by the school? Are you going to reach out?
I got a copy.
You did?
Yes, it looked like they were prepared by a five-year-old.
It wasn't the same one that they, they sent to me a few months back that I forwarded to you? Was it different?
It was a little different, but the only thing it had was survey benchmark elevation.
Kid graduated kindergarten.
It didn't change any.
A joke. It's pretty dangerous. Look at it.
So Kenny?
No, no questions. Good afternoon, Robert, Utility Manager. I'm going to jump around my, my update. I just wanted to update for the lift station bypass pump installations. We have a bypass pump that's been sitting in our parking lot now for a year. Our preferred contractor who has done these installs and we had work has gotten so far behind and has, just does not have the time. We gave him a final January fifteenth to get our, our next pump installation in progress and they will not meet that date. So we started today to start associating more bids for contractors that will be able to put these pumps in for us. And also, the high school bypass pump is online and operational now. So we now have two in the field, one in the parking lot and one on the way. So within the next three months, we should have four online operational bypass pumps.
Kenny, the first pump that the contractor is not failing on? If we go out and there's additional cost, does he pay it?
No.
Who pays it?
Well, we would. Well, the installation cost.
Whatever the cost, any increased cost, if he's not meeting his contract, we ought to be taking steps to recover our money.
Yes, it was, it was a part of.
Yes, it was, it was a part of the 2020 budget and he was to do the, to do the complete lift station rehab and do the install with the pump, um, and say with COVID, he just, he is just completely. No, he's not started. We, we, he, he started, he gave us a start date with 30 days, then 60 days, 90 days, and it just kept going. He's, he's, he's so far behind. It's just, I don't think he's ever going to get caught up. He's given us commitments that he will do it. It's just, it's every 30 days he pumps us again. We're the smallest fish in the pond, basically. Uh, the, uh, high service pump project, uh, I just wanted to give you a quick financial update. Everything is online. Uh, so far we've got our new AccuSign in, we've got our new transformers in, we're still waiting on the gear. Again, COVID related, uh, the operate, if, if we, everything goes as planned, when we get the gear and get it online, we will come in under six, come in under budget of $6,396 left over. So when we have, we have a, a rival date of 1/31/21 for that gear. Uh, our, our district electrician will do the installation. That will all be done in-house. Uh, once that is in line and, or online, excuse me, uh, we will install the new speeder programming and then start running up and get, getting it online and working out our bugs, which there are always going to be bugs when we put a speeder system in. This should be online and operational. Uh, we're looking at hopefully the first week of March, we should be good to go, hopefully. Uh, the Commerce Lake Fire Hydrant Repairs, uh, we're looking, we've been pressure testing the West Link's line. Um, we're going to have one business that's going to have to be shut down, uh, for a shutdown with no water service for approximately four hours for the first switch over for this hydrant. These are, uh, 1989 understrained fire hydrants. Uh, we worked out a deal with South Trail last year in conjunction with this roundabout project. So we have one, the main valve for this line does not work. We were able to shut the line down. We just have to use, uh, two valves and that shuts the loop down. Uh, the main loop will, will have to run down Gateway Boulevard and we're really concerned when we go, when we go to shut down that the Gateway Greens, the remainder of a good chunk of it is going to have some significant pressure loss. So we're running about a two-week test to see, just to give us a good base of where that pressure, the averages are before we really go forward with this. Uh, again, these are unrestrained, uh, like we did with the ones in Gateway Greens before. Uh, these are, normally would take two hours or probably going to take about four, four to five hours due to giant blocks of concrete sitting behind these fire hydrants that can just wreak havoc with your staff trying to get these things out. So we want to be 100% or as, or as close to, uh, sure as we can get with the pressure problems in West Links. And then, uh, where I'm going to meet with the district attorney tomorrow morning about this, uh, utility locates. Uh, we want to template the Gateway Greens, uh, project that first left the leg of it and how that worked out as our benchmark. And try to mimic that throughout the community. Um, so we are trying to, we're going to talk to the district attorney and see exactly what our options are and what we can through, uh, an ordinance through the board of supervisors require the HOAs to come to the district. It would be in their, certainly be in their best interest to meet with them, to go over plans, to go over what we, what we would like to have done and go over how bad these projects can go if they are not properly planned out. Uh, but we'll, we'll, I'll bring back that on the, uh, the next meeting or the next utility manager report with the outcome of what the district attorney advises us that what we can and cannot do. What we would like to do is meet with whenever the, these communities go into a underground or they're going to do like fiber optics or any kind of underground work in their communities, that they will come to us and we can set up a meeting with the contractor and go over the whole project and get everything out in the open like we did with your community and that worked out. It couldn't have worked out any better. We had a lot of issues, but there were issues that were unforeseen. Uh, whereas we can compare them with, with Stony Brook and what happened with Stony Brook, we didn't know they were even going to do it until we started getting the locate tickets. Um, so we would like to see if we can, if that's one of the options that we can compel the HOAs to come to us beforehand. It's, it's always in their best interest to do.
Gateway, Gateway Phase Two is in it and they've already asked for utility locates. I'm just wondering because the fact that they are, uh, terminated a couple of subs and bringing in other ones, I'm, well.
They have five.
Yeah, well, I know, but last I heard the other day was three, but anyway, I'm wondering about the possibility of Travis can do it. Is, let's have another meeting over here. We bring everybody back together one more time because we could be talking to some people that weren't there on the first one and don't know all these things. The two issues that we ran into that unfortunately defeat what, what you say is the one is location storm sewers. We are not marking storm sewers unless we've changed.
It's an unlocated, where they, they do not come through. Why that is, I do not know.
The only thing you can do is if you see a catch basin and you see a lake, you might assume that there's a pipe between the catch basin and the lake. But that's about as far as you can go. Uh, we saw some kinky stuff down in Hampton Greens with water lines supposedly five feet deep laying on the top of a 24-inch pipe, uh, 20 inches in the ground. So you're not going to beat that stuff. I mean, that's just stupidity 30 years ago and we're just going to have to be lucky that we miss it. But the big, other big one that we're running into over there is electrical and, uh, I don't know what we do with that. FPL, no clue where the stuff's at. No clue.
Sewer, sewer is the residual big one because they hit the lines and nobody knows it until a month later. Right. The, the laterals going into our sanitary sewer, they, they hit them up above the easement at 18 inches or wherever they are.
They're not marked properly on the Asbills. It's where, well, well, over on Hampton Greens, it was marked properly on the Asbill. But you go from that point to the house, you would think the common deal would be to run a straight line. They put two 90s in. It's just crazy.
And that has residual effects throughout. It, 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 we're, it starts raining, we get flooding into our sanitary sewer.
I think it's a good idea to have.
I would agree. I would agree.
I'll see if I can get that full on.
And that was, anything on?
I had, I had one question. Pick your brain. Have you heard of anybody in the communities that have a problem with like a red reddish ring forming around like a bathroom sink?
Uh, here and there, yes.
What is?
Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, let's say fustarium type bacteria that there's a lot of literature on. I had a, a resident in Pelican about this about a month ago and we did.
What kind of vector?
It's, it's a, I want to say fustarium, but I might be wrong.
What does the owners do?
The, the, the instructions that we give them, um, is to keep the area dry. And that usually will tend to, if it's on tile, you'll see it in this bathroom.
I don't know how to see it. I think you would have to be dry in a house.
After there's water left there, if there's any residual water left there, because it's usually around the drains that they wipe that.
Oh, so no, it's after use, dry it.
Right.
After a good wet.
No, no, no chemical addition or anything like that would solve it. Not that I'm aware of.
I'd say I had, I had a resident in Pelican about a month ago and we did bar tests on her and it came back as none detected, but with a red ring. Actual sample water and that's.
Yeah, I mean, you got this owner contact you.
We can do that. We can do a bar, we can do a bar analysis.
How, I understand why it would be, why would it show up on house A and nobody else?
Household chlorine issue.
Yeah, how bad is it? I was, I asked you if you had something to do if you had cast iron. Nobody has cast iron anymore. Because if you have cast iron, you get a chlorine surge, you'll get deposits, but we don't have cast irons, all flasks.
We run, we run into that in Pelican, uh, we were running into that in the Sellican, uh, around their sink drains and their bathroom.
Well, this person's having it's in Cowal. I'll have him give a contact.
We, we can, we can run a, a simple bar analysis test on it. I'll give you a good, give you a direction. I'll see you in the bar.
So Kenny, you'll, you'll, Kenny, you'll follow with Ed on that. Um, is there anything else for, uh, utilities?
Nope. Not this, I have agenda items.
Do you want to hit those agenda items, Doug, while he's here?
Yep, let's go ahead and do that. So let's jump to, uh, 4A approval for two new utility field positions.
Kenny Hall, Utility Manager, uh, this agenda items for two new field positions. Uh, a, a, as I, as I did the, uh, last, last meeting, I, I started off the same way. It was the, that we have pretty much fundamentally changed our way we run this operation, what we have done and the, the, the heavy investment that we've made in our utility system. Uh, the current staff plan is understaffed in two key areas, field maintenance and capital improvement projects. Uh, due, uh, and I want to reiterate on that, maintenance, it is involved with our AMI and metering system. Uh, the capital improvement position is actually a, a, a lateral slide and a promotion for one individual who's currently working on Brian's staff as the maintenance person who would be promoted into the utility slap on staff on a slider, slide into the, into the trade position. Uh, and mostly what's driving on the capital side is all the, the money that we had invested into our utility system and at this time, and with the COVID situation, we have gotten so far behind with everything and on our maintenance. Uh, we planned a, a position a year and the position that we actually pulled forward, which gave us two, which is why I'm standing in front of you, would be from the 2020 side of the budget, which we pulled forward. And that is, is if you look on, on the, uh, order, work order staff that I added into the agenda, you can pretty much, that those numbers will tell you, tell the story on the metering side. Uh, we've gone from, uh, about 1,200 to 1,300 repairs as on our, on our, uh, metering system to 2,300 over this year. And when this happens, this just completely inundates the staff and I mean completely. And on the other side of this, we have, uh, invested heavily in, in our capital side and we have, we're going to have seven fixed assets in the field on our utility system. Meaning we'll have four bypass pumps, two fixed generators in the field that are all diesel. All, all need maintenance, all need regular checking. We've invested, uh, close to a million dollars in lift station rehabs, uh, new panels, which are, are going, are turning to be, turning out to be a super efficient, uh, investment. All of this needs maintenance and as we go forward and as we, as we keep, as we keep doing our community sweeps, that in part drives our capital, capital, uh, plan as we find things, as we do our general maintenance. Uh, there are, the maintenance is just so key to what we're doing and protecting the investment over the last five years that, that, that this board has authorized. So on that, if you also look on the overtime, uh, the overtime has just gotten, as you can see for this last year, we spent $40,306 in overtime with one field operator with $15,000 in maritime. Now, some of that is from the pool and, and our staff members coming in for the pool and key spots on the weekends. That, that, some of that will go away. If, uh, as you see, we have five or four field operators and one field supervisor. And if you look at their overtime pay and hours, it's really lopsided, uh, the two new positions. If, if, if we were to get them, we will be able to disperse a lot of this. Uh, I budgeted $25,000, which is about average for the overtime, $25,000 to $30,000. That overtime is not going to go away. If, if we're maintaining and operating our system, it is a 24-hour, 365-day-a-year operation. So we will be able to disperse this, uh, much greater than what we would have. It wouldn't be so lopsided as it is.
Question? I'm looking at page 46 and I agree largely with what you're saying, but I'm having trouble with the math. I'm looking at 1,249 hours of overtime, which is a little over a half a man. But you can't do it that way. You've got to take the 40,306 divided at the current hourly rate of 22, which is 1,832 man hours. That would justify one, certainly a, a, a full-time employee. Where's the other one coming from? What's the need necessity? Because it certainly isn't overcoming.
Uh, the metering system, the metering system has just taxed us to, uh, let's say it's, it's the one, one position will be strictly like we have one full-time field person for the metering system.
Saying the metering.
You're going to have, are not part of this. That's a step. Not as far as the, well, overtime a little bit to get caught up by the, you know, on the weekends, we'll bring, bring two or three people in for, for two or three hours. Sometimes one person will come in for three, six hours. But we, we are in need of another full-time to, uh, for metering, uh, metering position.
Me, metering related issues.
Oh, metering related issues. And that, and that also covers leaks, breaks, well, repairs.
Well, we're, we're, we're talking apples and apples.
Looking at the, the overtime pay and I recognize, you know, that there's some opportunity there. But you said that on an ongoing basis, you're still going to have 25,000 a year.
I budgeted.
For the differential is we have available about 10, maybe 15 grand to support, as, as Ed just said, one person. And I totally agree with that. I also agree with the need for the second, but how do we pay for it?
It would come out of the utility reserves and then we would budget it. Yeah. And then we would budget it for each.
So you don't have it budgeted for the current year.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, would you ask, uh, our representative Kenny or Bob to include with this, uh, recommendation, the titles and the salary ranges of the folks that he's wanting to hire for the next budget? Thank you.
You hear that Kenny?
Yes, sir. They would be, they would be field, field operator positions. Uh, currently we have a district electrician and he will be moving up into, uh, the capital, capital improvement plan. He will, he will spend about 50% of his time and the other 50% of his time that he will be working with the field operators, training them for the lift stations. So we would have two field operator positions at about between $16 to $18 an hour range to start.
Okay.
So they're not $22 an hour.
Ask it to be included in the resolution when it goes to press.
I'm going to say that again. Is it included?
And I'd like to have all of that included, uh, when we, uh.
When we approve.
The minutes, the minutes of this meeting, so we have something to go back to refer to.
Yes, so, uh, w- once we, uh, when a motion hits, Kenny, if you can just make sure that you work with Chris to have that updated in the, in the, uh, uh, in the meeting minutes, so we can have the, the specific titles and the salary ranges included for the record.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so thanks Kenny, uh, for this item. Do I have a motion to approve?
Well, I got one other question before we leave. Is it reasonable to expect the 15, the 10 to $15,000 reduction in overtime next year if you get these two positions?
Yes, I believe so. Yes. To a reasonable, I would, I would say you could hold me to that process. You could hold me to, uh, 25 to $30,000, 20 to 30,000.
Right now Kenny is averaging, um, his wages for the first, the quarter of the fiscal year, 11% of his wage expense was overtime, just for one quarter.
Which is just. Okay. But the normal overtime should be, what, 7%?
Uh, we were thinking about six.
About six.
Yeah, we were figuring we'd be able to cut it to half.
And I definitely don't want utility.
A lot of it is luck as to when they work.
Well, I, you know, I understand that, but I mean, we only give the manager a target.
Yep.
If these two positions are approved, and I hope they will be, but the target next year that you will be held accountable to for your management is to keep your overtime 6%.
Well, I definitely don't, I definitely don't want utility employees sitting up at the pool.
That one, that one, say, I just want to thank, we run it, we run a 24-hour, 365-day operation.
You picked enough.
And there could be a, you know, 10 breaks next year. We could have a cold, we could have a cold snap the last two weeks and we had 10 breaks and I have.
Kenny, you can hit the number because if things go south in one area, you got to look for the offset in another. Otherwise you just write checks.
The nature of my business makes that very difficult, so I would say 25 to 25 to 30,000.
You get the number, I'm going to pull you up, but you tell me the number.
25 to 30,000.
Which I presume that 6%.
That would be, that would be my number.
Uh, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, Chris, can you call the vote?
Sure. Mr. Bang?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gepper?
Yes.
Mr. Kinkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
How long will it take before you're already hired? Do you have any idea?
We have one already hired. Uh, we would have to, well, we have, one's already here. One's already here.
It's a lateral move.
Yeah, it's a lateral process.
Well, you still got a backup.
We would have to, he would have to be, he would, his position would have to be before he came across.
So you still do two people.
So, okay. That's a good question. So Kenny, if you're basically promoting someone, so you're creating a, creating a position and then this person will slide into it, um, we do plan to backfill that other position, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Uh, and Kenny, so you have another item on the agenda. I think it's the, uh, uh, vehicle.
Yes, sir. Uh, this, this is a, let me start. Approving expenditure not to exceed $75,000 for a new heavy wheel maintenance vehicle for the field utility staff. Uh, we need, or there is a great need for a dedicated heavy wheel vehicle to move equipment throughout the district. Uh, we currently have the utility crane truck. Uh, there's a job, a big vulnerability there if that crane truck goes down or if we have multiple incidents like a hurricane, hurricane type event. This dedicated vehicle would be to move equipment around and it would provide us to be able to crew our field staff to a vehicle, three wheel vehicle. And it is properly equipped for utility work, meaning we could equip it. It's the same as the crane truck that's currently in our in our inventory minus the crane. And that crane truck is for those stations.
And Kenny, this this vehicle is, it's something that would be leveraged, you know, on a regular basis, right? This is not an emergency vehicle. It's a, it's a daily, weekly vehicle that the district would leverage.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
Doc, can we discuss?
Question for Chairman?
Yes.
Kenny, I'm looking over your business here and I see that you have one or two Chevrolet Silverados and you've got a Ford. F five fifty and you haven't told us which of these are you going to buy?
Oh, we, we, we would, if we had approval for this vehicle, we would, we would, we're looking at an F five fifty for continuity. With the existing vehicle, but we want to leave open the option of being able to negotiate if we find a better deal for a vehicle that will work for this purpose. That was the main reason to, that's why the vehicle we were saying not to exceed. We would like to expand our options on this vehicle. F F five fifty is is the most abundant one and we've, that we've found, but there are several opportunities that we could have if we shop around enough.
I thought the I O T was only around sixty six.
So you haven't decided what you're going to buy, is that correct?
No, sir, we have not. We.
I always love saying at Galloway to see what the price was going to be, because the others had prices, but the five fifty didn't.
Well, my my deal was is that it could five fifty is around sixty one if I recall. Why do we need seventy five?
This was the not to exceed, this is the general, general price range from what I.
Sixty five is not to exceed, but if you got a sixty one, why would you need seventy five?
Are you going to put a hoist on the back of this vehicle?
A compressor and tools.
Yeah, we're equipping it and all that.
Bill probably rented two over at Gateway as when the. Lift truck was gone, was out for service. The guys were up, up the creek without a paddle. They didn't have any way to move the equipment around, so his trucks, predominantly it's hitch is going to be more important than anything. Because it allows us to move, but we can't move without the lift truck, without the freight truck.
Yes.
Is that to Ed's point, is that seventy five K? Does that include all the enhancements that you'll need in order to rig it?
Right, yeah, that was, that was with the, with. With suspension being the main, as Mr. Supervisor Campbell just said, you'll deal with the suspension package. They they have several, I would say mechanical options, cabinets, cool boxes. Dual dual wheels and to answer Supervisor Guy's comment, no, we will not be putting a crane or a hoist on the on the side of this vehicle. The the lift station vehicle has the crane.
But it's fundamentally the tonne capacity.
Yes.
They get a combination of hitches and things, whatever you need, satisfying our requirement. Okay, my only comment was going to be, I'm glad to see that everything you offered was American made, GM Ford or Chrysler. And I'd certainly like to see the Ford five fifty, especially to get a good price.
So does anyone have an issue with, again, doing a not to exceed at seventy five, even though they looks like it's going to come in around between around sixty five? So I would imagine Kenny, you're going to do due diligence and and, you know, get the best price possible we can.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll approve, approve the motion or take the motion to approve not to exceed seventy five.
And I'll say.
All right, Chris, call the.
Yeah, call the vote. Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Gepper?
Yep.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Motion passed as five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, so Kenny, that's it for you. And then we have, we have tabled foresee any, any. Mods to consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, I've got two questions for Brian.
Brian had to leave, or you skipped me.
I'm sorry?
Brian had to leave and you skipped me. I wait all the time.
We skip people here. Well, I'm just going to answer the question that has come up. Gateway Greens, the sidewalk there at Gateway entrance, somebody was talking about putting in either markings across the road or. Signs on the sign posts saying dangerous crossing or something like that.
I'll ask him. I think they ordered those signs. I'll check. We're looking for a little smaller one.
And then, okay, yeah.
I'll follow up.
The last thing we want is the sign to be more of an obstacle which you can't see. Then the other one was that I just got bombarded this week and didn't know anything about it. Are we having problems at the pool with the heater?
Yes, one of the heaters went down. We're just maintaining eighty degrees. Maybe a little bit over. The people are used to about eighty five and the new heater's been ordered.
Okay, because I, the story I heard was that the temperature wasn't eighty degrees. It was down in the mid to upper seventies. And that nobody knew what it was going to be because we didn't have any money.
We ordered the heater today. Well, we gave the permission for Tim to go ahead and order the heater today. We, I only know because I did the appeal for it. So they were going back and forth whether or not they should keep the two heaters and we had like kind of like a backup like we have now where one went down. Or go to a single heater for the pool and it was more cost effective to keep it the way we have now because even though. Having one heater would be better if it goes down, you've got no backup. So we decided for, to save money, I think it came in like forty eight hundred dollars to replace the heater. And he's got fifteen thousand in the pool maintenance budget for this year, so like a good chunk of the budget, but.
What about something that got to the people over there that they were told there was no money to do it and all this and they got all riled up?
Who was telling them there was no money? And who are we talking about? Where did this information come from? Seashore or?
Yeah, I'll find out.
I was not saying.
Go there and swim.
No, I know that the pool is a little cooler than they're used to, but the heater hasn't.
It has been.
Yes.
That's, okay, that's all.
Brian approved it today and I issued the purchase order for it today.
All right, and yeah, and I do apologize. I I wasn't looking at the agenda and I I skipped. Laura, you and Leslie. So do you want, are you ready to go?
He's trying to get done by five.
Yeah, you're not going to make it. You're twenty minutes out. Um, I I'm not sure what we can, what we can accomplish, if anything, with this ranking that I included with the agenda for today. But the way that I broke it out is anyone who, anything that was a high, I counted it as a one. Anything that was a medium, I did it as a three. Anything that was a low, I did it as a five. And that's how I came up with the rankings for these. So it's all over the board. There's really no consistency as far as a certain area that we want to focus on. And I know Flavi and I were chatting a little bit before the meeting. And there were some ideas that I had come up with as well. I think take this, ponder it. We probably need to come up with some kind of a chart to look at things that are like low hanging fruit that we can tackle that are. Easy to do, aren't going to cost a lot of money, have a good impact and and then rig, going up to things that we know that we have to get done that are going to cost more money and take more time. And lay out timelines for these things because there. I am not seeing a continuity on the board with the way you guys rank these things.
Some of these things are consult related.
Right.
So it wouldn't have anything to do with them.
And that's what we need to look at. So I'm not saying that the things that are higher, that's what we're going to do. This is not set in stone. This is just how you rank them. That's.
I thought, and I couldn't find it anywhere, and I thought, sure, I know I ranked it. We have the FPL projects, the irrigation work, and we had the Santa Suter Forest Main down the FPL Eastman. Those, I know I have them rated as high on the deal, but on this listing, I don't see them in there. In fact, I don't see any of our capital projects that were on.
There was just one item that was listed as capital projects. It wasn't broken onto those three separate ones. That could be why.
Okay, where is.
And that's what I would, that's what I would have liked to have happened is pull out anything that's, that's capital or maintenance. And then if there's anything that's administrative, which, oh, some of this stuff is administrative. Let's split those out because I think what we need to, there's some things that are that are staff. Capacity related and that's administrative. And there's other things that are going to require effort and cost, so that's maintenance and and capital. So maybe the next phase, if you don't mind, Laura, is to kind of split that. So anything that's capital, maintenance and then administrative.
Yep, when I, actually what I did when I, when I did the ranking, each of those columns that you had on your paper when you did it was assigned a section number. So I can actually pull them out by section and so I can rank each one of those.
So under that medium, implement capital reserve projects in oh oh one and oh oh four, you just blended it.
That was, that was the exact wording that you ranked it on. I didn't change any of the wording, though. Whatever is in the ranking is exactly what you saw when you ranked.
I like that it's like, we can separate the admin versus consultant.
Yeah, and the one, and in the additional recommendation I would have too is when you pull out the admin stuff, if there is, if you see a creative way to maybe just categorize that a little bit. So like an example would be permit criteria manual. That is an administrative task, but it is a policy and procedure, you know, or something like that. So. If, because a lot of these are administrative, if you can maybe bucket those a little bit, it'll help us too. Because like permit criteria for me is a high priority, right? And so that is, you know, that's something that, you know, we should be looking at because it's policy procedure that impacts how we do business. There might be something else that might just be, you know. Uh, I don't know, but some other classification that. You know, we just, if there's a way to clap, to add classifications to the administrative, that's what I would like you to do.
I understand.
Done that water meter repair and center issues, that's across the board issue too. Because depending on what happens, this thing could lean toward the construction side, the other deal, administrative side and the.
It affects everybody.
The legal side.
It affects everyone.
Yeah, that that could be capital and maintenance. You know, there could be a little bit of both in that. So, okay, yep, this is good.
This was just more to kind of show you where it ended up. And then I figured this was what I would hope to come out of this, just ask where you want me to go next. How else would you have me to break it out so you have a better idea of where we probably can move forward?
And what I, so what I would do is let's split it up a little bit. And then have maybe staff take a look and to see if there's things that we can go ahead and start to do. You know, do we have capacity to go ahead and just put it on an action plan? If there's anything that needs board approval or additional prioritization, then that, and let's, we'll we'll put this in line for one of our workshops to come back. But we need to figure out of these items, what can we start working on today? And then what needs to be prioritized and approved?
Okay, would you like me to bring that list back at the next meeting or in a month and I do my update?
Um, capacity, if you can get it done by the next board meeting, it would be nice for us to just take a look at it. So we can prepare for action when you, you know, in the next available workshop.
Especially if we're going to talk about rates and fees and costs associated with capital projects.
Okay. Okay, and Laura, would you just didn't want to, the bad with staff, have them give the list, you also a priority, you know, what be in order? I have a separate priority list from staff, yeah. Any other questions?
Nope. Okay, and Leslie has a utility update, utility billing update?
Yes, Leslie, we're toward the utility billing manager. On utility billing updates, I kind of put together some numbers for the year on what we have done for billing. First is our payment structure. I think we had asked in the last meeting how our payments are broken up. So it's, the graph shows the annual effects of the payments through a bill cycle. So majority, fifty percent of our payments are through auto, auto pay checking. We are pushing bank e-pay so that customers can take a little bit more control over that and. Help with the maintenance issue, the administrative restraints with people's credit cards expiring. Or if there's any NFS, people are able to at least have a little bit more control on their auto pays. So that's why we're pushing the bank e-pay.
And the orange is the, just.
Orange, people, yeah, dropping off checks at their office or mailing them directly here.
Do we pay for the credit cards? Is there something that we charge?
There is a charge, a transaction fee that's charged to us and we pass that that fee to the customer. So when the customer pays, they, they pay that.
So they know.
Yes.
Other questions, Lori? Can you go to the next page, Chris?
Sure.
There's a table. Keep going. Look, you had it going on the next page. One on urban, you keep going, a little bit harder. That, it's the one that's on, no, that's not it. So one that adds Santa Louis on there, I think it goes the other way.
It's the last page.
It's open balance.
There you go. What, no, you went too far.
Okay, I'll bring it up. Got it?
There you go, there you go. What, what are, they have nine buildings yet to build out there.
Those are the availability fees.
What, I don't see, I, this writing is so small. FY nineteen twenty, the balance eleven.
At the year end balance, at the end of the fiscal year. Those are the availability fees. That have been built to Santa Louis for those properties that they have not paid. And during the January sixteenth.
Wait a minute, this is the availability fee per unbuilt building that's per our covenant's at three hundred, four hundred.
Six dollars a month.
Per, how much?
Six dollars per month.
Six dollars per month.
That they have not paid since two thousand and five.
Since when?
Since two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five to now is fifteen.
I'm sorry, two thousand and eight.
Make it. Years times twelve, fifteen years times twelve, that's a hundred and eighty, and a hundred and eighty times six, okay, that's about what it was. So fifteen years and these suckers have not paid this yet?
No, and they refuse to.
And who are you dealing with? Because we're having the same problem over there with one another.
Craig Bloom, I believe.
Well, that was the road we were going down. We had found out it's it's an LLC owned by a company in Ryan, New York. And Craig Bloom, we thought that he was hit hauncha. We're finding out he's not hit hauncha. He's just a puppet in the line here.
But they are paying their current fees because we've sent them notice.
And what's their argument for not being, not paying these fees?
They were not made aware. They're a lot.
That, that's no excuse.
Yes.
Do we, do we not have lien rights?
Ed, we do, we do. We also, when they come in for their permits, when they construct, that's an opportunity that we could put also.
What, who's that going to?
When they come in for their permits and their connection, we, that's when we will also say pay these.
Tony, these people will come in for permits for destruction before, somewhere right before hell freezes. They aren't going to do any more work on this. They're dragging their feet, they don't care, they have a put surface lifts called the roads. This, this owner is a deadbeat. We're going after them with the county on forcing them after eighteen years to put the final lift on the blacktop. We got the government involved in that, but the issue is, my thing is, is I know one way to get the bear out of the buckwheat. Let's go in there, bottle lean on those nine buildings.
Well, we could do that. We could also turn off their waste work. That would get their attention.
They don't waste work.
There are no buildings.
Do you have any buildings at all?
Oh, you can't do that to the existing people.
Oh, I'm sure you can.
That's for the citizens. The people in that association, there are sixteen buildings to be built. Nine are built, seven are done. Seven times four, twenty eight units. You can't screw those people because the developers are dead.
That's correct. We can only go after these properties.
But, that's our.
We can only go after these properties that have not paid the availability fees.
I don't know if a motion is in order, but these people are deadbeats. Let's file a lien against them.
Okay, I'll work, we'll work with Leslie on that. And again. The lien will just sit there, just like the amounts are sitting there that they owe, that will will be paid when and if they ever decide to build.
But let me ask you a different way then, Tony. What, what, what will get their attention?
Uh.
That brings it.
To me, a lien would.
No, but finally lawsuit's kind of a pain. No, a lien might, but you're right. If Craig, can you give me the name of the people in Ryan, New York that are in charge? Because Craig was the one that we were dealing with and he basically blew it off.
Well, I'm glad to feel that you're in the same court I'm in. Take my calls. Can you, the reason I want to bring this up is pan up just a little bit, Chris. This, this has got me bugged when people do this. Just go up a little bit on this page.
Up or down?
I'll see the bottom of that table because there's others on this, what we're going to point out is we got single family people. There you go. We're going to have a bunch of people, one, two, three, four. We're going to have a bunch of people, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six, single family people that we're going to go after foreclosure, all that good stuff. And we're letting this developer in good old New York, which I'd, I won't say that. It's not right. Go after it.
I'll work with, I'll work with Leslie on that. I'll, I'll retrieve my files because they are older files. And, uh, and also if you can give me the name of the guy in Ryan, New York, Ed.
I'll give you what I've got in the way of a address and everything, Tony. That's about all. But I can tell you, we have our attorney at the HOA has sent stuff to Ryan, New York, and it's almost like it went off out of the sewer system.
Okay, we'll push it more.
But I think, I think a lien, a lien would wake up someone.
Well, a lot of times we find they don't, but it might make these guys, but they don't seem to respond to much of anything. But, uh, we'll, we'll push it harder with Leslie.
Well, I'm, I'm feeling somewhat relieved with at least the position we're taking on the paving. That we got Lee County Code Enforcement even jump on board and getting them to move is next to impossible. And they, they did. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, the only other area I did want to touch on, uh, the past due late notices and disconnections. We did have a little bit higher of late notices that were mailed out primarily because of people and the mail sending out checks uh, being received by the district. We had several customers who were very upset, um, demanding their fees to be waived, uh, which were denied because staff does not have the authority to do so. But, um, other than that, for the most part for the year, our late notices has been on the downward, a little bit of a downward trend. But we're not seeing a very huge uh, we do. We can make our residents aware that there, if there is a need, they should reach, reach to us before, before, uh, we get to the point of disconnection. And for the, for the most part, um, would you have a lot of challenges that you comply with that? The following page is just the summary of the work orders for the year that we track through the billing system. With the top five being related to metering and locates. And then the last page is the, um, overall, everything from customer service, billing adjustments and our outstanding balances that we're tracking. Is there any questions on that so far? And then, I'm sorry. And then the last is just a revised temporary hydrant meter agreement that we had Tony look over and we'll, we'll start to implement that next month.
Well, we're going to have a speaker on the twenty first on, uh.
Utility rates?
No, meters.
That will probably be the first or second meeting of February. We do have an update phone conference tomorrow. We had one Monday with Tony and staff to talk about the current situation.
Okay. Leslie, am I reading the, the tube stone bar correctly? That we're actually, uh, for Lake James, it was really better than the other prior years. It always kind of helped us a little. Well, maybe it hasn't helped us, but they're not as delinquent.
Timing of the bill.
It gets timing. I also think that, um.
There's a significant difference on the shut offs and the penalty and late notices. I mean, this has been a pretty good year. Twenty-one. Okay.
Sure, I'm a down one on that.
I would have thought it would have been a year.
We just got our HOA quarterly assessments for the new year. Twenty-two percent not paid. We've never had anywhere near that.
Well.
Big numbers.
A big result of that is that they need water. So disconnection of water will.
You're right about access control. I want my water.
And Leslie, I have a question. What is the, the late fee that we have? Because I know, we don't have a policy, right? If they, for waiving the late fee, there is no policy for waiving late fees. It's one point five percent of the balance.
So if someone is so upset to the point where they want to dispute that, they would have to go through a process to submit written requests through utility billing and then we estimate that to management and the board.
But there's not a fee associated with that?
No.
Do, do we want to think about maybe if those, I mean, you're looking at those forty. If we can, then what we really want is encourage people to sign up for, uh, EK, you know, with the banks. Maybe waive that one point five fee if they sign up for, you know, like two, two birds in one stone. They won't get a late fees going forward. And then we got for a new customer that just signed up for it. Uh, I mean.
As a reward and so.
Yes, as a, you know, that's.
Well, we think it'll bounce.
Well, we're still taking on the twelve dollars whatever we're being charged is because we, whenever we get charged, we're charging them back.
Normally we do not see this. It's just, I, I would have to say in the three, four years I've been here. This is the first time we've had such an issue and it's because of the local postal service. But normally, uh, we don't have very many complaints in regards to wanting their fees reimbursed because they, their payment didn't, wasn't posted on their account. So I will look at, at that as we look at our rates and changing our policies. But it's not like a by, every month situation.
But as the check comes, the, it's in that, right? See the post lock? I should tell you, I mean, if those dollars might keep it, but the post lock shouldn't.
But as of right now, we're talking about payments from the end of November, we still don't have them.
Right, the post lock.
Yeah. So, so that's what I can maybe encourage them to sign up and then get that. And then the second thing, I guess, I don't know if you'll see here on Facebook. Maybe add a post in there in regards to that, you know, maybe three or four easy steps and how to. Sign up for that. I think that'd be a good idea too. I know we have, there is an option, but I don't think you put instructions for how to do it. I, I think people get discouraged when they think, oh, I'm going to have to fill out twenty thousand pages of stuff. And sometimes, oh, you kind of have to babysit them if you want them to.
We are encouraging people to, if they're having an issue, because we still have issues with people and their auto pays with their checking accounts and with their credit cards, with their checking accounts, if they're NSF and the payment isn't posted, we send them out notice. But if they don't get that notice and they're disconnected, they're, you know, obviously upset. But, um, we will do more to, to push that.
All right. Uh, any additional questions for Leslie?
Thank you.
Now we will move to consent agenda.
I don't have anything, Paul.
I do not either.
Do I have, uh, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda five, A, B, and C? Chris, you call the vote, please.
Call the, Mr. Banks.
Aye.
Mr. Gepper.
Aye.
Mr. Tinkle. Aye. Mrs. Walsh.
Aye.
Mr. Guy. Let's see. Mr. Guy, vote on the consent agenda. Yep.
All right. Well, let's, uh.
Oh, he's back. Mr. Guy, do you care to vote on the consent agenda? And you're muted.
There you go, Bill. Uh, Bill, approve, uh, consent agenda, your vote.
Yes, I had one item I would like to talk about before I vote, if I may, page eighty-four. Page eighty-four, there are organizational matters. Where we voted on officers. And this says that I voted nay, appoint a new chairman. I'd never do that. So if you would ask the scripter to, uh, check that out and correct it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. And we will go with approval the minutes with the.
I think there was a problem there because he did vote nay. I think there must have been, uh, not understanding what it was. Because I was a little taken by it first too.
Okay. We'll get that straightened out. And with that added, do we have your yea vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. And then Chris, uh, future board business. I know we got resolution for the field usage. That will come back as part of, uh, the motion to table today. Uh, what else do we have coming, um, down the pike for, uh, for agenda items? So the supervisors can have some line of sight.
Well, the, the big thing is we're going to have on the twenty first a workshop with the utility rate consultant. We'll also talk about some financing. Alternatives with commercial paper if the SRF funding is not available. And that presentation by the rate consultant will also address a stormwater utility. And where we'll be with that is moving forward over the next few months, fine tuning it, doing a public hearing. And then likely in June, approving that rate for implementation, October one with the new budget.
Um, and Laura, can you do me a favor? Will you just circle back from your notes from the past two meetings and just make sure that there's things that we put in the parking lot or, uh, follow-up discussion items that we have either addressed those or if we could just maybe pull them back. If you could just send them to me as follow-up items. If we've adjusted everything, fine. But I feel like there's, there, there might have been one or two things that we had uh, table discussion that I haven't seen come back yet. I think one of them might have been around, uh, looking at. I think staff was going to try to find, uh, a design engineer or someone to maybe look at, uh, uh, the uh, the, uh, the Commons Park area as potential phasing that.
Yeah, that is underway.
Yeah, okay.
Is somebody going to learn?
Uh, no, we're talking to them. They're looking to put the plan together. We sent over all the past studies that were done and they're just getting price to put a plan.
We're, uh, taking RFPs.
No, it's really a, a preliminary type thing with a preliminary design, but not a lot of, you know, it's concept.
But okay, who, who's, who's the firm?
I do not know. I don't remember the name. Then I know this, uh, the information with all the last plans that have been done, the historical plans, even the park and the tennis center.
Yeah, I've got all those books and things.
They were, they were all.
I'm just interested in who the firm was that's doing it.
Brian would know.
I'm sorry.
Brian would know.
Okay. I just want to make sure somebody that's, this isn't his first review.
No, it's a credit. That's what he does.
I'm sorry.
I do know that the person doing it, that's what they do.
And, and what I would imagine, Ed, is this is like, if staff finds some, found someone, just do a first initial stab. We're not obligated, you know, for any, any future, uh, expectations. But, uh, why don't, uh, Laura, can you just maybe send that out to the, to the board? Just, uh, who that individual is that is doing that initial uh, conceptual, whatever he's doing?
Yeah, I'll get that from Brian.
I appreciate it. Um, and then Chris, just, uh, I meant to ask you this earlier, but we had said in our workshop that what we would love to have happen is as far as a, um, a capital improvement package is, um, a combined proposal for, uh, you know, irrigation, for landscaping, for, you know, everything that we were looking at from a much larger scale. Uh, so we could package that as one, uh, improvement proposal. Is that something that staff is working on?
Well, we have had the, uh, evaluation and proposal and cost figures done already for the irrigation. And Brian's put together, um, with Billy, a preliminary budget to do streetlight replacement.
Okay. Yeah, because I think what we, the, I think the concept was instead of doing these as four separate projects, maybe we should bundle them all together. So, okay, this is going to be a thirty million dollar initiative that we need to secure funding for. And we're going to have these different phases or different, you know, components of that total improvement project. So is that still the approach?
Yes, and we could, uh, on the twenty first, that workshop with, is going to be pretty tied up. But we could do it the following month in workshop. Open discussion.
If you're going to be doing that, then I think let's bring in, tie in the capital reserve issue.
Sure.
Let's, let's get that person or people here, start talking to these people about putting together a, uh, a realistic capital reserve for the, uh, entire CDD.
Yeah, makes sense to do that, Ed, in parallel. Yep. Okay, great. Supervisor comments. Uh, I'll start with you, Bob.
I have no comments or stuff.
Okay, Ed?
I have that, Ed.
Flavia?
Oh, I have some questions for Brian, but I'll just follow up on the emails I have then.
Yeah. And, uh, the one thing I'll say is, you know, I, I really appreciate just the dialogue back and forth, uh, with, within this group. Uh, it's something that we've been able to do over the last couple of years. We're not always going to agree on things. Um, but I do appreciate the, uh, the back and forth, uh, even today with the, uh, with the soccer field stuff. There's different items that I know that we're passionate about. Um, but I appreciate the mutual respect, uh, that we're, that we're given back and forth. So, um, that's the way I, 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 I look for this board to operate. And, and I just want to thank everyone for, for how we're handling all these situations. So that's it for me. If there's nothing else, uh, from staff, I will call this meeting adjourned at five forty-eight.
Thank you.
We'll do better on that next time.